I call to order the meeting of the Ohio Plan -- the Ohi -- I was talking about Ohio earlier. The Ohi Planning Commission, uh, meeting of Wednesday, December 5th, 2018. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card, you'll find them in the foyer, and file it with the secretary, Sherri Herbrooke here on our -- on your right. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. And while the Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to man -- maintain order and decorum and obey the pow -- the orders of the chair. Wonderful. And the big hammer. Uh, Sherri, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quilisi?
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Here.
Commissioners Merk?
Here.
Giagiallo?
Here.
Corbin?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Lottis?
Here.
Terrific. We have a full slate tonight, uh, which is better than a quorum. And, uh, let's have the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Lottis, could you lead us, please?
Begin. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is public communications. The time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. And in fact, if there's anyone that wants to speak on a non-agenda item, please understand, we won't interact much with you because it's not on the agenda. Is there anyone out there who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have a consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, November 7th. Uh, any, any comments from the commissioners on those minutes? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Lottis, thank you. Any discussion? Then can we have a roll call, please, Sherri?
Merk?
Abstain.
Giagiallo?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Abstain.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Great, okay. Uh, next, disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. Disclosure by commissioners of site visits and ex parte contacts for items on the agenda, which is really only the design review and tree permit for the Tesla charging cabinets, et cetera, at 987 West Ohi Avenue. Commissioner Merk?
Um, I'm familiar with the site and I've had no ex parte contacts.
I'm familiar with the sites and had no ex parte contacts.
I'm familiar with the site, had no ex parte contacts.
I'm familiar with the site and I have had contacts and I, um, am going to be recusing myself when that item comes up.
You're involved in the landscaping of the project, or?
Uh, not with the Tesla directly, but, um, with the property, Boku, and I had conversations with Tesla.
Okay.
In that process, yeah.
I'm familiar with the site, had no ex parte contacts.
I'm familiar with the site and no ex parte contacts.
Also, I'm familiar with the site, but, um, consistent with my recusing the last time, I think I, I need to recuse this time also, so.
Okay. So we'll have five commissioners contemplating the next item, our public hearing item, design review permit, DRP 18008, and tree permit, T-18-018, for the installation of six Tesla charging cabinets and 12 Tesla charging posts for electric vehicle charging and associated equipment, and work in the drip line of protected oak trees located in the parking lot at 987 West Ohi Avenue. This item was continued from the October 17th meeting, and I'd like to hear from staff, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Um, as you had just noted, this item was heard on October 17th with the direction to come back before the Planning Commission with some modifications to the site plan and design. Uh, I think the specific items that the applicant acknowledged they were going to change and are reflected in the plans were the height and colors of the charging stations. The height was lowered, I believe now they're like four feet 11 inches over what was closer to six feet. The colors are more muted now, they're not the bright red. Um, a second change, which was an option in the previous staff report, was in lieu of building a large screening wall around the, uh, charging cabinets that a landscape screen would be put in instead. That has been, uh, shown on the revised elevations. I believe they have the California Wax Myrtle, which is an evergreen hedge, which would screen that in lieu of having what I believe last time was a eight-foot Trex fence. Um, so those changes have been made, and there was a question last time, I believe, by the chair about how the project could impact the Boku site, which these Tesla charging stations would be on. The site's owned by the Ohi Valley Inn and Spa. Um, in terms of parking, the Boku Superfood site in its entirety has 103 parking spaces. So if this project were to go in and--
Sounds like overkill.
It is, and that may be why it always looks so empty. Um, the, uh, if you were to assume the Tesla stations were to go in and be fully occupied by Tesla, also with the removal of four parking spaces due to the cabinets going in, that would be a loss of 16 spaces, so say there would be a capacity of 87. Boku's required parking is 65, so you still have a surplus of 21 spaces--
Right, okay.
--on the site if this were approved, as shown. Um, and I believe that covers all the issues. Unfortunately, I think like last time, I don't see the applicant here for the project. So, uh, I think we've covered all we can. I know they had a presentation last time and we discussed this, but, uh--
And the, and the drawings show the shortened, um, charging posts.
Correct.
I looked through this and at first glance, I did not see where, where the colors were. Um, I believe this is on, uh, sheet number C-6. It shows the height as, as, uh, four feet and 11 sixteenths of an inch above the concrete foundation.
Correct. And I think last time they were closer to six feet.
Yes, and I'm not sure how tall that concrete foundation is, but it looks to be not more than three or four inches above grade, I think. I did have, I did have one question, and I would direct it to the applicant if there were someone here. Um, but sheet number, I don't see a number on it. This is the topographic survey, and down in the left, left end, it shows owner, city of Ohi. This is the, um, about the fourth sheet in, in the packet. It shows a layout with a vicinity map as well. And at one end of this, it shows owner, city of Ohi, uh, on the west end of the property. On the east end, it says owner, Daybell, L-O, Lois Sep Property Trust. And, okay, and in the middle of the parcel, it says owner, O-V-I-S-L-L-C. Is that O, Ohi Valley Inn and Spa?
Correct.
Okay. So that whole stretch of property along there is not owned by the Inn, apparently?
Apparently, if this is accurate, apparently not. I'm not familiar with the other property owners. I know the parcel in question is owned by the Inn and Spa.
Uh, any questions for staff?
Uh, I have one, Chair. Um, yeah, I'm getting-- It's always helpful to me when colors are labeled, so I see paint color substitutions, cool gray, fusion equinox, stamped concrete, stone mason gray, and--
Okay, yeah.
And in, in sheet number GN2.
Yeah.
Um, so, and you mentioned that, um, they're more muted than they were, there aren't the gray, so--
They're, I think they were red before.
And then, um--
Prominent.
So in the color sheets in our packet, where they're saying the colors shown in the rendering are close approximations, um, we've just, I'm just bringing this up because we, we, I remember like a year ago or more than a year ago, um, we didn't get samples of colors. We didn't get a color palette handed to us, and it, it, you know, there was some contention about that because we really didn't know what we were getting. We were like, how can we approve something when we really don't know what the color is and there's no sample? And it's up to the applicant to give us samples, otherwise we can't really do a proper design review approval, and they just need to come back with the right colors to show us. So, I'm just bringing that up, I'm not, I don't have a hard and fast rule, but I want to remind my fellow commissioners that we had lots of conversations about that, that when we're told an approximate color, it's kind of meaningless to us because what are we approving? So they give us some names of the colors, but we don't have a, a color sample to look at. And, and that's kind of a problem for me.
Okay, so in addition to say like the, the mock-up elevations of what they would look like in the parking lot on the color sheets--
Yeah.
To have say a color swatch that references name and then the color--
Yeah.
Like a little two-by-three square or something like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because if we're told this is an approximate color, I don't know what that--
What sheet are you looking at?
Well, on G2, it shows a list of colors.
GN2, the paint color substitutions table?
It says paint color substitutions, and then in the color xeroxes, it says the color shown in the rendering are close approximations.
It was, um, I, I got the impression that they have standard charging stations, that they don't, they're not going to do like, and the one that they showed originally that they brought was kind of out of the Jetsons, it was very big, it was all red on the inside, and this is their muted version.
Right, and you, you're correct, is they, I think, I don't know if they have just two, but they're standard colors and sizes, and like these aren't made specifically for the site. I think the last meeting, they said they typically use these in a more urban setting, and that's why they're lower than what they had come in with, and, and these don't have quite the charging power the other ones do. It may take longer if there's multiple cars hooked up, but, but these would be their standard--
No, I understand that, but that's assuming I know what a standard is and I know what an approximate color is, so to codify the way we do approvals on the Planning Commission, uh, we might get another project where people go, hey, this is an approximate color, and then we're in the same situation we were over a year ago, where people were kind of handing us approximations.
Mm-hmm.
And eventually--
That was in a residential setting, as I recall, yeah.
It was a residential setting.
Yeah.
Yet, how do we want to function as a commission? And do we want to, you know, do we want to have the way we approve things be a movable target? So, that may be a conversation for another day, and I'm just saying that--
Right.
I don't know really what these colors are because I don't have a sample and these are approximations.
Well, I'd like to kind of follow down that path. I, I mean, I found these drawings pretty much unintelligible for the most part, a lot of them are too small, basically you're going through the, on these things, which are what they look like. And I want to ask you, Luke, about these big green boxes here that are strewn all over the parking lot. I would like to see some screening on those two.
Okay, so like say on the, the final sheet where you have three of those together--
And I think there's more of them, I'm just not quite sure exactly how many there are.
Right, there's the grouping of three there, I'm not sure how what the total is offhand. But you, it, so as--
And can you also explain to me what these little blue triangles are representing?
Here we are. Yeah, that's what I thought they are.
Views of the pictures.
Those are the views in the, in the renderings.
Right, so it's showing like one, two, three, the, if you were standing where the number is looking like where that's, yeah, the angle you're viewing.
I don't know, I thought maybe there was some wonderful light rays coming out of something.
X-ray vision. It does, it does seem odd that, that the large boxes at the back of the parking lot are screened and the ones on the side of the parking lot are not.
Well, I can't speak on behalf of the applicant, that could be a condition of approval that is--
There's more over here.
--the same type of screening be used for what they're installing, I think with the exception of the charging stations themselves.
Right, the charging posts, right.
But the, the more infrastructure things that are not being used by the public, uh, with the applicant not being here to say they would accept the condition, we could attach the condition that they be screened in a similar manner with landscaping?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, it could take just a moment, but the three gentlemen in the second row, none of you are here about the Tesla stuff and have no contact with the All right, any more questions for staff? Uh, we don't have an applicant to speak? What's the, what's the sense of the commission here?
Oh, I'd like to ask the, my fellow commissioners, do we need, need and want the applicant here? Should we not get into this unless the applicant's here to speak? Are there not questions for the applicant that they need to be here?
Well, everyone could speak for themselves, but as far as I'm concerned, uh, we went over this pretty thorough the first time, and it's, it's, it's a fairly simple, um, project, it's not really complicated, and it's either do it or not, you know, the posts, or they, they muted the posts like we asked for last time.
They're shorter posts, like--
Yeah, versus the red. And, uh, and the colors are really, uh, you know, concrete colors, and they're not painted house colors, so I don't think that is a main issue for me. Um, and the only other question is whether, uh, whether you want them there or not, and I personally think, um, that we're moving into a, a culture of, of EV vehicles, um, electric vehicles, and, uh, they're just going to be a common thing in most places. And so, uh, to me, I don't see them, uh, as a, a, a major eyesore at all, I think they'll just blend away. I think we add the condition that we screen those big boxes, and that's easy enough to do, and, uh, move forward, so that's, that's my opinion.
Yeah, and I want, I want to reiterate, I, I'm, I don't have a big issue about the color, it was more about protocol and how we--
And I agree, I agree with that, Ray, especially about, especially when it comes to structures, of course. When you have a building, uh, and, and it's very important to have those paint swatches, and we usually do have it for those types of, uh, projects.
The charging post site, in my opinion, are small enough--
Yeah.
--that, that anything in the earth tones and grays is going to be unobtrusive.
Yeah.
So, um, I would not, I would not personally worry about it, but then, we were here engaged in quite a bit of dialogue with the, with the folks from Tesla the last time, so--
Yeah, I--
We have that advantage that you don't.
Yeah, I wasn't here on October 17th, so I apologize for that.
I guess my-- Yeah, I'm sorry.
Um, I mean, if the applicant were here, here's what I'd have to say, if I was here on October 17th. I was speaking with Chair Quilisi a little earlier about this. I think it's great, we are moving into new culture, um, electric vehicles, there's a lot going to be rolled, rolled out by 2020 by a lot of companies. This isn't going to stand in the way of the way I vote, it's more of a little editorial on, I just think it's interesting that it's a proprietary Tesla station, and the Inn has its right to put whatever they want on their land, but given how many Priuses there are, how many other, you know, it's a proprietary station for that company, for their model. If that company goes away, we got a bunch of boxes and, and, you know, charging stations for a few cars that will be on the road. Um, so that's just my little editorial on that, is I wish they had, were putting in charging stations that, um--
Were generic?
Well, we're, we're more, you know, available to a bigger demographic than simply Tesla owners, which there aren't that many.
I agree with that, I, I'm bothered by that as well.
That, that question came up, do these charging stations only work on Tesla cars?
Answer is yes.
I don't recall if we asked that question on October 17th--
No, we did.
--much less whether it was answered.
I could, yeah, and I, I mean to interrupt, but, um, at least for now, my understanding is the technology of the Teslas, they're the cars. Oh, well, I will no longer have to answer, um, for the experts on that, but--
Ah.
I think for now, they are Tesla-only charging stations due to the technology Tesla uses that other makers are not currently using, but I can defer now to get a--
Okay, now we have applicants here.
So if we take that one step farther and we talk about the zoning ordinance, they fill the need of, you know, tourist need for a small group of tourists. And I would love to see some generic chargers too, so that more than Teslas could charge their cars there.
Well, there are, there are other so-called generic, I guess, charging stations around town, not a lot of them.
Right.
Um, but I--
Yeah, but is it the position of the board here to mandate what, you know, what the owner chooses to--
Do we have the right to approve it or not as to whether it fits in the zone of meeting general tourist need?
I see a lot of Teslas here, I mean, there, there's a lot of them.
Sure, but, you know, it makes a statement too.
When you go to buy one, when you go in to buy one, you see them, it's like Volkswagen's, right? You just, once they're in your mind, you see them everywhere. So, uh, there, there's a considerable amount, I'm, I feel it's going to, you know, be used. I don't think we could sit there and say, uh, or mandate--
Too narrow, too narrow a market, yeah.
--mandate what, what they want, you know, if it doesn't work for them, they have to deal with the economic consequence of that, and, and so on. So I do have some questions for the applicant, maybe you can open up the public meeting and have them--
Right, yeah, now that we've, we've dispensed with staff, then we'll open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward.
Good evening.
Hi.
And your names?
Nadir Hussein, I'm a program manager at Tesla, in charge of all the supercharger installs in California.
Okay.
My name's Jorge Rosa, permitting specialist for Tesla.
Permitting specialist, okay. Um, one of the questions that came up beforehand was, uh, what are, what, what is the palette of colors? We see, we see on page GN2, there's a listing, there's a Pantone, and there's a Sherwin-Williams, and there's something else. Would you happen to have samples of any of those colors around?
Are these the colors, for what exactly are you referring to? For the screening?
This is, this is for the equipment, for the charging posts and various other things. This is a, a table called paint color substitutions. There's a Pantone Cool Gray, a Benjamin Moore Fusion, I have no idea what that one is, Bear Equinox, Sherwin-Williams stamped concrete, at least that would appear to be a gray, and Valspar Stone Mason, the same.
Yeah, so as far as all the equipment goes, at the site, like the charge post, and then we have our switchgear, and then we have some other supplementary cabinets that support the charge posts, they're all white. And the, the colors that you're referring to were for a screening option, there were Trex, like these wooden panels, and they come in four different colors, but right now where the design stands, we're, we're not proposing that kind of screening.
You're, you're doing landscape screening.
Landscape screening, exactly, so, so the colors that you're referring to, you can, you can ignore them.
Except on these, excuse me, Chair, on, on these color xeroxes, we're seeing a big green box.
Correct.
But you're saying that's white?
Yeah, so that green box, uh, belongs to Edison, so that's proprietary equipment for Southern California.
Oh, that's not your equipment.
That's not our equipment, it's, the power that's feeding this site is dedicated for Tesla and future tenants, if there's other betterment work that's happening in the area, but the color of that equipment, that's, that's state and national code.
Call it Edison green.
Edison green, okay.
So when it says the color shown in the rendering are close approximations, you're talking about the, your white charging stations?
Yeah.
Not the green Edison?
Yeah, so the green Edison, it's, everything you see in that photo is going to be pretty much what would be installed in the field, so we add that note because it's a computer-generated image.
Got it.
It won't be exactly the right tones that--
Got it, but your equipment is white with like a beige-ish gray back, white in front with the grayish, beige.
Yeah, so the charge post itself, on the front, you'll see that white cover, and the back, it's--
Right.
--a dark charcoal gray.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
It was, it was my request that those big green boxes that are whatever color they're going to be also be screened.
Okay.
Because there's a lot of them.
Are they, um, I'm sure there's, there's multiple, um, Southern California Edison equipment around, around town, are they also screened, or what kind of aesthetic did you have in those areas?
Um, it depends on, I guess, where they are, but because there are so many of them clustered together, and this is only one group, and then there's--
Two on the side of the parking lot, right?
It would be nice if you could provide some more of those--
Okay.
--nice bushes that you selected.
Yeah, so we're using, yeah, we're using a native plant called the Wax Myrtle, and that's what we're intending to use to screen the cabinets, so as far as screening the Edison equipment, we're, we're required to keep certain clearances on the front and sides of the equipment.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure what the restrictions are on that.
But yeah, we can absolutely, if--
Certainly want to do that legally, yeah.
Yeah, so--
It's usually three feet.
Yeah, so three feet and then eight feet on the front, so I think for this site, we'd be able to accommodate that, not an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so when--
I had a question that came up again, I thought I had the answer, but Tesla chargers are exclusive to Tesla, you can't use them, even if you have an adapter, there's no such thing?
Correct, as of now, there's no adapter that would substitute, but it is open for any manufacturer to go ahead and create it for their own vehicles, it's just nobody's putting it in--
Got you, they could, so someone else could make an adapter--
Correct.
--for a Tesla charger.
Correct, so--
And sell it to their customers, and then they could put it on and, and tap into a Tesla charger.
And then likewise, the, the other generic chargers, we'll call them, that are here and there around town, cannot be used on a Tesla?
They can, because there would be an adapter that we create that goes the opposite way from the general use--
Okay, so when you sell a Tesla, you, the owner gets an adapter to use with it?
They can purchase it, they can decide to purchase it if they would like to or not.
Yeah, okay.
So, kind of the idea with the, um, Tesla chargers and kind of what we discussed the, the last meeting, is the idea is, uh, anybody that has a Tesla, for the most part, will go to these Tesla chargers, which would, would then free up the others that are currently available for the general use, I guess you want to call it. Um, so the, the idea is, um, within our chargers, there's a certain timeframe that it takes to charge, it's a supercharger, charges within, uh, from zero to 80% in about 40 minutes.
You mentioned the, at the last meeting, I think that these charge Teslas a lot faster than ordinary chargers.
Correct, and if you were to charge a Tesla on the ordinary, ordinary chargers, it would take a lot longer to charge a Tesla there, so--
Okay.
That's the benefit in, in having these superchargers there.
To give you perspective, as a standard Tesla battery, you can charge, it's about 300 to 400 miles in range, so if we use the charge point that's in your parking lot, it would take about 12 to 14 hours to charge up a Tesla, whereas in a supercharger, it would take five to 20 minutes to charge up that same vehicle. So the intent with the design of our cars is the, most of the components are open source, so the patents are free for any manufacturer to use, um, so that's why we always provide adapters, so Tesla owners can use other manufacturers--
If they have the time, yeah.
They have the time. And then, um, yeah, the plug itself, like we reached out to GM, Ford, they all have the designs, but they don't outfit the cars appropriately for you to use them.
I have a question.
Yes, Ray.
Are these chargers, um, in this location restricted to guests? Are these chargers in this location restricted to guests of the Ojai Valley Inn or any visitors to the town can, can use them? Or do they have to show like a room receipt or a conference? Do you know how the inn is handling who gets to use these?
You talking about the Ojai Valley Inn right now?
Yeah, so, 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 no, well, no, the chargers that, the Tesla chargers that are gonna go in, are they restricted to guests of the Ojai Valley Inn who own Teslas or any visitor coming to Ojai, staying anywhere?
Any visitor.
So anyone, anyone can use these? They're not restricted just to Ojai Valley Inn guests?
And any Tesla owner in the country.
Any Tesla that pulls into the parking lot, it sounds like.
Yep, got it.
I'm wondering, are you paying rent to the inn or to Boku for this use of land?
For this use of land, I believe we're using, the agreement terms we have with Ovis is we, we pay them. And then there's, there's certain other nuances, but I don't have.
You pay who?
We pay the property owner directly.
The Ojai Valley Inn?
Ovis, he said.
Okay, I didn't hear, I missed that. Thank you.
Sure.
I'm done and ready to make motion, so.
I've, I've heard answers to all my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I mean, unless anybody else wants to, wants to comment?
I just wanted to chime in to say, you're, just so, we'll add a condition then on screening the Edison, the boxes, to, to the degree that Edison's acceptable that as well. I realize you don't control that, but you'll do what you can to screen those in a manner similar to what you're doing with the cabinets.
With your switch, you called it switchgear?
Yeah, it's, it's called switchgear, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, sure thing.
Jester?
So I'll make a motion to approve the design review permit, DRP eighteen dash zero zero eight, entry permit, T eighteen dash zero one eight, for the installation of six Tesla charging cabinets and twelve Tesla charging posts for electric vehicle charging and the associated equipment, and to work under the drip line of Protected Oaks located in the parking lot at nine eight seven West Ojai Avenue. And with a condition that the applicant screens according to the codes, the Edison electrical panels as well.
Because we have a motion.
I second that.
Any discussion of the motion? Let's have a roll call, Sherry.
Mark?
Yes.
Giagio?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Colsey?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Congratulations. You need to go back to see Sherry again, I suppose. But you're free to get your, your permits.
Great, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thanks.
Okay.
And you don't have to hang out here all night, even though you probably took quite a while to get here. There's some great places to eat in town, so.
Y'all have a good night.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Item three, okay, great. The next, the next item is our discussion item, development standards for fences, hedges and walls. And just for background for the commission members, I went through and did an electrical scan of the municipal code. I think you have a copy here, Luke. Just searching for any provision in the code that mentions the word fence, hedge or wall, and this list shows you there are forty-seven places in the code where fence, hedge or wall appears. About a third of them are in, are in Title Ten, and the others are spread hither and yon. And so if you're interested in that, you can pull up any one of these. This is a discussion item. There's no decision to be made tonight. But you can, if you like, I can send Sherry, and Sherry can forward to each of you, a soft copy of this because each of those items is a link to a place in the code. It'll take you right, right to the paragraph where the reference occurs. It took all of two minutes.
Did you know how to do it?
So she sends this to us electronically? These are actual links?
Those are actual links. So if you get a soft copy.
Yeah, if we get an electronic copy, that would be great.
Then you just, just click on it. It'll take you right to that part of the code.
Cool.
Sure, well, yeah, I would send it to everyone, not just one.
And I will send that. I think, I think we will start with a report from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So we're going from a very high-tech project to a very low-tech, but I'm sure important discussion that I know has been on people's minds in Ojai for a while. The issue of this standards for fences, hedges and walls, and again, this is a discussion item. This was presented to the city council on October twenty-third. Some of you may have even seen, this is not a lengthy, I wanted to just do some PowerPoint to try to talk globally about this. And while a lot of what we're talking about is Ojai municipal code-related, I think also in the discussion, we're looking at things like developing guidelines, policies. It's not necessarily all code changes, though that's a key piece of the discussion. I think the, the council's main direction is to try to get as much input on the issues from the planning commission before this returns back to the city council for their additional discussion and maybe clearer direction on what exactly we want to do. I can say at the outset, one of the key issues we'll be talking about, the council already gave us direction on, which is a five-foot setback, which I'll be getting into more, that they had already said they would like to see that eliminated from the code. So I'll be talking about that more and then showing some photos, which also date back to, a, a lot of these photos were part of a sergeant town planning exercise from a couple of years ago, where they were looking at a much larger planning exercise for the city of Ojai. But just again, to repeat, I mean, really, this is to solicit ideas on, related to fence, fences, hedges and walls, and primarily the interface in the front yard. So the transition from private property to the public realm of how you would like to see Ojai look. And I've got, again, it's a pretty brief PowerPoint. Don't want to belabor the issue. I know there's a lot to talk about, but you can break a lot of the discussion down, again, really into two categories. If you've got a public safety and obstruction issue, which is very compensate intersections, as you have that triangular approach with obstructions in the right of way, and that's not necessarily limited to just fences, hedges and walls. I mean, anything that is in that corridor that obstructs your view, that's a safety issue. But these are the most common pieces of that, and I would say hedges more than anything else, because the fact that they grow, they can get into that path of visibility and cause issues. Similarly, and I already think it is a code provision, though not referenced in this discussion so much, where you're talking about safety, you right now have essentially this clear path of, say, five feet. Things have to be lower than three feet, or if it's a tree, up to, say, eight feet to maintain visibility. So again, I think we've got a safety issue, which is largely a code enforcement discussion. I think that's much clearer in a lot of ways. The more problematic discussion about really where Ojai wants to go.
The aesthetic question.
Yes, community character and design. So these are things I think people are gonna have a lot more opinions about, that could feel differently about that. This is not so much safety related, but again, how do you view your community? Do you want to see the front of a house? Do you want to see front porches and doors like you do in a more traditional community? Or is some, you know, measure of screening and privacy, you know, this, this is changing a lot in a lot of communities where over time, there's more of that screening and loss of contact with the home directly from the street in the neighborhood.
Or pedestrians and cars passing by, yeah.
Correct. So I think the majority of what I'm talking about, what the staff report focused on, is that second piece, because I think this is where, going forward, the council and the commission will probably wrestle more with how to best deal with these issues. So again, as I, I put under the second heading there, it's really the interface between the public right of way and the front yard is a lot of what we're talking about. A lot of this is in the residential areas of the city. You're balancing issues of privacy with traditional community character and trying to maintain open views. Again, this is primarily a design and a neighborhood preservation issue, not so much a safety issue. This is right out of the Ojai code. I wish the image was a little bit bigger. Let's see if that's working. So this area here is that invisibility triangle we talk about at intersections. This is what the code currently requires. That hatched area to the left is where you need to have that no more than three feet corridor. And again, this is purely going to safety. This is generally on corner lots. It can involve the park strip as well as the corner piece of, of a private property. And again, I think this is a very clear issue. It's just a matter of enforcement, you know, and I think you are probably all gonna have examples of intersections that you can relate to where this is an ongoing issue. Okay, so dealing with the existing regulations, I put a couple things in bold, and the first two bullets is for fences, hedges and walls, where we're talking about those elements in a front yard, there is a three-foot height limit. The three-foot height limit applies to fences, hedges and walls regardless of material. So you could have a solid masonry wall, you could have an open picket fence, any type of a hedge. Three feet is the height we're talking about in a front yard. Under the second bullet, and this does not pertain to hedges, but it does fences and walls, and this is what the council had directed at the October meeting to eliminate from the code, is there is a five-foot minimum setback, say, from the sidewalk or public right of way. So what this means, and I have several photos in here that will illustrate this, is you could have something like a picket fence or a split rail fence, which is typically out at the property line and is open. It's right now required to be set back five feet. Not sure where that came from, what the purpose of that is. Ideally, you could landscape, you could do a lot of things in that space, but for.
Not been enforced, to my knowledge.
There are certainly many examples around town. Right. No, it's true. And a lot of these, again, three feet, when you even think about that, is pretty low. So certainly most hedges in front yards are not three feet. They're greater than that. And even a lot of the fences are more like three and a half, four or five feet. And again, this is sort of regardless of design. So something else to keep in mind is right now, the code treats all of these things the same. That may be something else you want to differentiate, where if a fence is more open, is greater height allowable versus something that's solid. Another thing we'll be talking about too is when we get into setbacks in the front yard, the, the setback when we're talking about fences, hedges and walls is based on the distance, say, from the sidewalk or right of way to the closest wall of the structure. I know this has led to some confusion over the years too, where setbacks are generally thought of, what's the minimum required area? So like a twenty or twenty-five foot setback in a front yard would be typical. When you're talking about the height limitation for fences, hedges and walls, though, that's based on the location of the structure to the property line. So essentially what that means is you could be treating neighboring properties differently based on where the house is located. And I've got a diagram here on the next page, also in the code, and I wish it were larger. But what I'm talking about is, say, the street out here to the front of this house, so it's essentially the front yard, not necessarily the minimum front setback, that determines where that three-foot height limit applies. And I think in the staff report, I had said where, if you're in a residential zone and you had a twenty or twenty-five foot required setback, your house is set forty feet back or fifty feet back, that three-foot height limitation would apply for the entire forty feet, because your home happens to be further away. If your home were built closer, then it would be a, a lesser area. So setback in terms of how we look at height restrictions for fences, hedges and walls is not the same as when we say the minimum setback required by the zoning district.
So the three foot is for the first forty feet or to the edge of the struc, the closest edge of the structure, whichever is less?
Right. So if you were to add on to the front of your house and push it closer to the sidewalk, you'd reduce that area. The intent of that's pretty obvious, is that the house is seen as the primary thing. The goal is to not screen the home. So I understand the intent. The only reason I wanted to mention that is I know there had been some confusion to talking to people since I've been here that, well, no, it's the minimum setback of the zoning district. It's more relational on where the structure sits on the property. So again, we're dealing with that front yard space when we talk about that height limitation. Okay, elements of neighborhood character. I just wanted to go through a few of these photos and look at. So here's a streetscape, you know, probably the typical traditional neighborhood most people would think is attractive, wouldn't have too many issues with this. But where in here is like, again, this portions of this open fence are clearly within five feet. So this is right, right now with the current code. This is the type of thing, if somebody were to come in, you would say it does not meet code, you'd have to set it back five feet. That also.
Somebody wanted to build it new.
If they wanted to build it new. And we'd also have to assume that the top of that fence is no more than thirty-six inches high. So I think a lot of what the photos are in here, tried to take things that I would say most people would consider fairly attractive. They're not gonna have issues with this. But under the current code, and in this case as well, you've got this probably less than twelve-inch planting wall here on the sidewalk, which would also not be allowed because it's right up against the public right of way. So the, again, these are things to think about in terms of, these are open fences, these are not solid walls. Is there any issue with having something like that?
The assumption here is that the edge of the sidewalk closest to the house is the end of the public right of way?
Correct. And that, that's the assumption I'm making, is that you could assume that's going from public to private there. You know, and again, right now, this, this fence undulates in and out, so you've got a lot of variety to it. So in addition to being open, it's not just a straight line down the block. But again, traditionally, a lot of that type of open look, these things are built out to the sidewalk. So again, the five-foot setback, which I think the council's already weighed in on, doesn't really seem to serve a clear public purpose. And just to contrast this, assuming this was a five-foot setback area, again, this is a similar issue where you've got an open fence in a front yard, this would be something that presumably would be acceptable, because you've got a low fence and a setback. And of course, they've landscaped it. You know, hard to say which is actually more attractive in terms of community character, but again, focusing on that setback. Now this one's interesting as well. We've got another open fence. I would imagine everybody likes that. You may have an issue with drought tolerance with hydrangeas, not doing too well in Ojai, but I'm not gonna make this a drought tolerance or water-wise discussion. But again, as we focus on the three-feet issue, again, which is fairly low, and do you want to distinguish between fences, wall and hedges, where hedges perhaps could be higher, this would be something that if you were strictly enforcing the code and you classified the hydrangea as a hedge, it would clearly be over the height limit. And it's just something to think about. And now in my own mind, when I see a nicely kept up landscaped yard, a hedge over three feet really doesn't bother me that much, say, versus if somebody had a bare wall of a similar height. You know, and in a case like this, you've got something in conjunction with a fence that I think most people would think is, or an asset to the neighborhood. It, it just gives you something to think about as you go forward in terms of height limits.
But it's not compliant with the code as written.
Correct. And like I said, very, you know, having done some landscaping work many, many years ago, most plants want to get over three feet. And a lot of very common evergreen hedging material gets over that height pretty quickly unless you're regularly maintaining it. You know, and here's another photo, just in terms of getting things complicated, where our code is fairly simplistic in terms of the height cap, is that, you know, a lot of things are more creative, that you've got a wood gate with brick columns that clearly exceed the height limit, you've got ornamentation on top of that, you've got planting all around this. And again, pretty much everything is gonna be over three feet here. And, you know, there are different elements. I know we included the Santa Barbara guidelines on this, which are very detailed as one of the attachments. And I think it's something we can use as a model going forward, where, again, as we get into this, do we want to get a little more detail and possibly develop, say, guidelines to regulate this, more than just having kind of black and white code language, where you have flat caps on what people can and can't do? I just put this in again because another thought I have too is while Ojai is a geographically small city, you still do have different neighborhoods built out over different times, different lot sizes. And all those things, I think, factor in. What, what we're talking about sounds fairly simple with fences, hedges and walls, but it's really a fundamental neighborhood design issue. And I think another issue for me on this, where I don't have a definite answer, but again, something to think about is, do you want to have different height limits or different design standards for different parts of the city? Which again, could be probably another, another reason to focus more on developing design guidelines rather than just writing a one-size-fits-all code provision. Because I know that's one thing with Ojai, is you have some truly older neighborhoods where maintaining an open front yard would seem to be something more important to maintain character than homes, say, developed after the fifties, where you have a very different style. where you have a very different style. You know, and here's an example, again, in Arbola, where you really don't have a fence or hedge or wall in sight, but that home doesn't really have any kind of street presence whatsoever. So, you know, you look at if there were something built, you know, up in this area, would you really see it? You know, as it is, the home's really not facing the street. This neighborhood's really all about privacy. It doesn't show up too much well here, but I think this, the chain kind of running across the driveway gives you a message too, but it's just an example I wanted to put in here that when you think of Ojai, I think, you know, I do as well, you think of the downtown neighborhoods, which are much more traditional in nature, but as you get out into areas like this, maybe a different standard makes more sense. Okay, so some just issues and questions going forward. A lot of these, I think, I've already touched on. You know, could fences be taller if they're transparent or they're set further back? Or in streets like the one we just showed, where the house really doesn't have a presence on the road as it is? An example here too, again, we've got a fence, say, is maybe five feet in height, not solid, covering less than 50% of the frontage. Right now, that would just not qualify because of the height limitation, period. It's over three feet. But for things like this, you've got this kind of mid-century modern home, the fence seems to fit the design style very well. Would there be things, again, where this is leaning more towards design reviewer guidelines? You have a fence that doesn't really block the house in its entirety? Seems like it's fairly well thought out. Would this be something you'd want to entertain allowing going forward, rather than just letting, again, a black and white code try to solve the issue for you? I threw this in just because I was, thought it was a real waste of a lot of redwood, but that's kind of the classic, assuming there's a house behind that on the right, this kind of answers the why you don't want to screen things off, where you're just looking at this extensive run of a straight fence. So that, you know, that seems to be the glaring example of what you don't want to have for just a six-foot redwood fence where you literally have no idea what's going on behind there, unless you can see the roof off in the distance.
Well, according to the current code, it depends on whether that's the front yard or the side yard.
True, and again, most of-
A six-foot redwood fence along the side yard, any time-
Side rear yards, yes, and you can even get, say, like a a minor variance, which doesn't go to planning commission, can get you another 20%, I believe, so you get to, you can get to slightly over seven feet if there's a reason to grant the variance, but six feet you can do by right. So again, trying to identify the key questions again, I think the first one the city council has already weighed in on is, you know, maintain the three-foot height and the five-foot setback. The three-foot height thing I still think is a fair issue because three feet is a fairly low height, in my view. A lot of, the city of Santa Barbara I know is 42 inches by right. I also believe on, not so much in residential areas, but where you have outdoor dining and you're required to screen, you have to have a 42-inch minimum. So I think there already are some other examples that get you above that three-foot threshold. And frankly, 42 inches again is really not blocking your visibility into a site.
Just love giving outdoor diners much privacy.
No, it's not, which is why most places I think want to go higher than that minimum height as it is. The second bullet for me too is, I think, a big issue about the hedges, fences, and walls seem to get talked about interchangeably. I understand that more with the fences and walls, but I think hedges, it's very different in, one, their living, and I think people are going to feel differently about, two, in terms of enforcement, wanting to go out, if you adopt a standard, say, and want to more aggressively enforce it, how could that be perceived if somebody, say, has a five- or six-foot hedge? Or a more informal landscaping that acts like a hedge? There could be reasons to want to treat hedges differently from fences and walls. Again, would you want to allow, again, that relationship as things get further from the public right-of-way is a greater height acceptable? And there may be ways of handling this where it's not so much a by-right issue, but maybe it's something where we use the design review process, or you come up with some other process that allows a discretionary review. I know, looking at Santa Barbara, they, you can actually get up in some circumstances, say, to a 14-foot hedge or 12-foot-high walls. But in order to, the higher you go, the more extensive review you're going to get, to simplify it, so that's something right now, we don't really have on this unless somebody were to try to make a request for a variance and go before the planning commission. But as I say, maybe different neighborhoods, different materials, further setback, greater height would seem to be something that you might want to consider. Guidelines as well, I think guidelines are very helpful on issues like this because I think as even the photos show, it's difficult to just quantify things and say that that settles the issue. Creative designers can generally do things that look very good, but may not meet your code. So developing design, design guidelines either for these for fences, hedges, and walls citywide, or looking at particular neighborhoods, might not be a bad idea in the future. I know we're in the midst right now of starting to get our general plan update going, and I'm digressing, but we did get the RFQ out to get consultants last week. So we're kicking that off, and again, design guidelines are a way of implementing your general plan. So maybe this is something we deal with a little bit later, but might want to consider thinking about now. Again, different standards for different neighborhoods, I think that's always a good idea to consider. Again, I threw this in because, again, this is the type of thing, like it or not, I think the homeowner put a lot of thought into it and certainly some money into it, but from a basic code standpoint, this is exactly the kind of thing we would just be telling people they can't build. And again, I, I think having- I'm not sure where this photo was taken, to be honest with you. I didn't take the photo, so. But again, I'm just trying to get things out there that that homeowner clearly looks like they've maintained their property and put some thought into this. It probably went through some kind of a process to get built. Again, here, these are things that are all well over three, three feet in the front yard, but it's not even really open. These are more screens that, you know, these are something that a design review process might be able to take a look at, rather than just trying to handle everything with solid numbers and, and leaving it there. And I believe that is it. I could have made this much longer, but again, I was trying to just get the issues out there, and I think that's my sense of what the city council's looking for too is that overall sense on, and particularly the non-safety items. For me, the safety items kind of answer themselves. If you have something that's a visibility problem in intersection, that should be corrected. You have something growing into a sidewalk that doesn't allow people to get by, that should be corrected. But where we get into these sort of things about, what should my neighborhood look like? And I know over time, I can think of other cities that have wrestled with this issue where either due to increased traffic on streets, people started screening their properties off, or just the greater desire to have privacy. That neighborhoods do start to change over time, so I think it's a good time to start thinking about it because this is the kind of thing you can probably spend some time on developing a solution, so. That concludes my comments for now, and I'm sure you all have quite a few.
Terrific. Kathy, I saw your hand first.
All right. I, I wanted to start off by saying quite a few years ago, at planning commission, you know, we repeatedly would have projects that would come in with an issue or, or even a property owner who had already built something, where it had to do with a wall or the fence or a hedge, usually, I think it was more even more the hedge issue, but we actually kind of came up with this idea about doing this neighborhood planning to, to deal with something like this, and I'll just give a quick example. There was a property owner at the top of Signal Street, right before you get to the, the hiking trail, and their property happens to go downhill. And if people are hiking at the end of the day or early in the morning, they're turning their headlights on, and a lot of people, more people are using that trail than ever before, so there's a lot of people turning around and pulling into their driveways. They came in and asked, could they put a hedge on the property line? There aren't any sidewalks up there, and we all agreed yes because of the neighborhood character there. Now, that was an exception because it didn't really meet the code, but because of that, and then during our discussion, we all said, we really need to come up with some sort of neighborhood planning, and I believe, design guidelines to handle things like this. So I wanted to say I'm in favor of that. I also wanted to say that in our present general plan, you know, they kind of promote the small-town character, get to know your neighbor, and that may be where this five-foot setback and the three-foot height limitation came from. And I know we've had projects come in where we, we've said, oh, we'd love you to add a, a front porch, and, you know, keep it low so that you can meet your neighbors and you feel safe and you don't feel boxed in or isolated. So I, I think there's, you know, a balance that needs to be achieved between the public space and privacy. So I'm, I wanted to say that I'm open to definitely amending that and having, having something in the guidelines, and then certainly, if there was an exception, they could come for a design review permit and have that looked at. Another, another item is with complete streets, we did these walkability data index sheets where we walked and did site measurements and notations, which I happened to share with Sergeant Town Planning when they first got started, and the reason I bring that up is, we actually went out and noted what neighborhood has had sidewalks, which ones didn't. All the, the places where hedges impinged on the sidewalk, and now the sidewalk, which was maybe originally four feet, was like two feet. If you were in a wheelchair, you know, there was no ADA accessibility. So we made note of all these things, also the intersections where you basically, you couldn't see because the hedges were too, too high. So there are some solutions to things like that, and I understand where somebody may want to have the privacy. You can actually do like a stop sign that comes out on an arm that allows you, and then wherever you do yours, the stop line on the street could allow, and this is for, say, a property that's already existing and has, happens to have the high hedge. But then, once again, you get into that safety enforcement, which may have to happen, but for new projects, we should have, I think the guidelines are good. And let me see, I had a couple of things. Another thing I think we may want to throw into this neighborhood thing is fire. Depending on where these properties are located, they may have to fi- follow fire landscape guidelines. They may not be able to have a hedge in the front, depending on where they're at. I don't believe our fire maps have been finalized. I, I'm not sure where that's at. I think it's still in discussion.
I haven't seen them.
Okay, but-
They're too, generally too coarse to deal with individual properties, but-
Right, but there may be something where it just reference, references another document, but I think it's something important to, to consider. If you happen to be in that wildland interface, or, you know, you're just bordering open space, you know, up at the top of Deloro or Signal, one of the higher fire areas, there should be, that should be considered. And then what else did I want to say? Well, I think that's pretty good for now. But those are my thoughts.
Anyone else have questions for staff or discussion? Bobby?
Well, I would like to see that five-foot setback disappear because I think that that doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. Also, the setbacks in different neighborhoods are different depths, I believe. I know when I went to do the front of my house, I went back and forth between the building department and Public Works, and they kept telling me the other one would tell you how far back you have to put whatever it is, and they kept sending me back to the other one. We determined that it was 10 feet, and whether I had to build a sidewalk, I never got an answer to that. But if there is, and then I think some places in downtown, maybe it's five feet, but if there's 10 feet of public right-of-way before my property line, that pretty much takes care of the visibility issue. It's not what I'm going to put 10 feet beyond the curb line that's going to block your view when you're pulling out of the driveway or going around because 10 feet is a pretty, pretty sizable distance. So I think that when you have that visibility corner, I think you have to take that setback amount into, and it's not, the line is drawn beyond that, like the five feet or 10 feet back, and I think you have to take that into consideration in terms of whether there's visibility or not because that corner is drawn with the 25 feet on either side, makes a huge triangle in somebody's yard, which I don't really know that that's necessary. I think it just depends on how far back from the, you know, how big the setback is for the private right-of-way. I think that, that makes a difference. I think that three feet for a wall in your front yard is ridiculous. I think it's too low. I don't see why anybody has the right to look into your front yard. I, it's not going to keep a dog in your front yard, and for a hedge, it's, it's, it's there's nothing that grows nicely on a hedge that's below three feet. So I mean, that doesn't make sense. Santa Barbara's eight. And I don't think that three feet for a hedge makes any sense whatsoever.
But Santa Barbara's 10 feet back.
Well, my house is 10 feet back.
Well, I'm saying that's not-
But I can only have a three-foot hedge.
What are we talking about, but you, you were mixing a couple of different things.
Well, they're talking about 10, eight-feet hedges. I don't know, is it always-
Right, but it has to be at least 10 feet back from the front line.
Well, maybe.
So that's, that's where-
Well, that's the whole thing I'm talking about, is that the setback has to be taken into consideration. Because if you're already 10 feet back, then the height should not be the same as if you're five feet back.
Right, but you were saying to get rid of the height and then raising the front wall, so that's why I was following your discussion.
Well, I would, I think that the front wall should be at least four feet. You should be allowed to have at least four feet.
At zero distance back from property.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's not going to block anything. A corner, I don't know, you'd have to really take a look at each situation and see what that looks like, and they do that a lot in there. But I think that three feet for a wall height, and and it's more about what's the unseemly thing that's across the street from you that you're looking at? I have one. I have an unseemly thing. It's been great. Nobody lives in the house now, but I'm sure somebody moves in. A three-car carport that's full of crap and big lights that go on all night long, you know? I, I mean, we have the right to shield our property from something like that, and when you're talking about it being neighborly and getting to know your neighbors, I came from the East Coast where in many, many places, everybody has a porch. I've always had a porch, and I have a porch here, and we actually sit in the front of our house. We're the only ones. Nobody sits out in front of their house in California, as far as I can tell. Maybe you do, that's why we like each other. But
Because I'm from the East Coast.
That doesn't, that doesn't, it, it's not that, it's not neighborly like that here.
San Amoeba's a special place.
And to say, we want you to have a three-foot fence so that you can get to know your neighbors, that doesn't work like that. I mean, I think that's pie in the sky, and I think that there are a lot of things that need to be looked at on this that I think need to be addressed. And, you know, I think our code says chain-link fences are, they don't say you can't have them, they say they're not encouraged.
Discouraged.
Get rid of them, they're horrible. You know, I mean, and they're five feet and they're all over, all over town, but, you know, we really do need to take a look at these things in more specific terms, I think, and not just, you know, we can't have anything more than three feet, and you have to have five-foot setback from the public right-of-way. Well, if the public right-of-way is already 10 feet, what do I need another five feet for? And what's going to happen in that land? It's just going to be another trashy area. So we really do need to take a look at a lot of stuff here. I think that I've always been troubled by a lot of the issues in our fences and walls. Oh, and I think one more thing is that the setback should be whatever it is, and it shouldn't have anything to do with where your house is.
Do we have more questions for staff? Yes, go ahead, Chester.
Luke, did, did you thoroughly look at the Santa Barbara code, I mean, the, the the-
That's about 10 pages, 12 pages.
I guess it's code, right, the Santa Barbara code? And, and compare it to our code and what, what kind of differences there are, because I felt that the Santa Barbara code was pretty good code. It was well-written. And so what I, I was wondering is how much work you've done on that so that we can maybe use this as a template? so that we can maybe use this as a template and just identify the problem areas instead of, you know, hashing through without a, without a purpose, all the different aspects of this and not somehow connecting them to the, to the whole. So, what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, is I'd like to, you know, pull out from the Santa Barbara code because it's already written and it's well-written and just identify the few areas because I don't think there's that many areas that we have differences on that we have, but we can identify them and just, and kind of focus on that, focus in on that and use that as a template to adjust our ordinance accordingly.
That also was raised by council using it as a template. And I think that's why we included it. I didn't make a comparison at this time because I think that's so different. The thing, Ojai, right now, it's very simplistic. It's a thou shalt, thou shalt not.
Right.
And I think Santa Barbara is a good template because they have code and the guidelines reference the code. And again, if you want to do something minimal, you want to do something 42 inches out at the property line, you can do it. If you want to do something, the more involved it gets, the more process you go through. So, it means you have the opportunity to do something. You're just going to have to go through more process in order to get it, more review. And I think that's the key is if you have discretion, you have, say, the planning commission or in the case of Santa Barbara, different boards reviewing it. That does make more sense. And I think that using that as a template rather than trying to invent everything is a good idea.
Yeah.
And then the, I think the other reason we put it in there too is again to take more of the guidelines approach rather than solely just relying on an ordinance to take care of everything. Because the nature of ordinances, it's the law. You meet it, you don't, you don't meet it, you now have to do a variance or some other thing, which is often more involved.
Right, so these are, these are guidelines. So, tell me the difference between a guideline and a ordinance, just for.
Guidelines can vary, but it's a more of a should than shall, though you can write them in such a way that they can be guidelines with a capital G. And I think where you're referencing code, like must be consistent with code. Guidelines, though, can be very helpful for things, say, like the types of materials used. Should something be open rather than solid? Locational things on property rather than just like mandating height or a specified setback. So, guidelines can do those more qualitative things better than an ordinance can.
Right, and do you see us moving in more of a direction of a guideline versus an ordinance?
I think on an issue like this, one, you're going to have to update your ordinance. I think council was already clear on one issue and probably others need to get fixed as well. Because I said, right, right now, it is kind of just this one-size-fits-all. It doesn't work for everybody. But I don't think just updating an ordinance makes this go away.
Right, because it's too rigid. It's too rigid and doesn't apply, especially with the different types of neighborhoods we have. You know, especially like Terramina, for instance, we don't have sidewalks and everybody's hedges are over three-foot high.
Arbola has no sidewalks.
Nobody's going to go through and.
My neighborhood has no sidewalks.
So, it's just, it doesn't really.
I like it that way.
Yeah. Now, as far as the five-foot setback, now, there's conditions where that actually makes sense. I can point out some properties in town where people put a three-foot-high fence right on the sidewalk and it's, it's just butt-ugly. I mean, it's just horrible. And, and there's no purpose in it. I mean, a three-foot fence doesn't, like you said, keeping a dog, it doesn't block a height, it doesn't, doesn't do a whole lot. So, the setback is more or less, for me, is aesthetic, you know, it's an aesthetic thing. And then the, I always thought that the, the setback, the front, the front yard setback at the lower height was sensible. In most cases, it, it, it works because most people will, will fence off their backyard. They'll go back to that property line, they'll put that little gate right there and they'll fence off the backyard up to the six-foot height. And that gives them the privacy that they need. Now, I would like to see some exceptions to that and I like, I like the way Santa Barbara does it. I like the 10-foot for screening, screening options because there are some very good architectural type of screening that you can do to help give you a sense of privacy in the, in the front yard setback without, without having to violate a particular code. So, there's that hybrid right there. So, but I believe Santa Barbara addresses that very clearly in their, in their guidelines.
Do we have more questions for staff?
Just a couple of clarifications. So, where there is a hedge now and it doesn't approach into the sidewalk or pedestrian path, is that, is that actually not allowed? I mean, we could enforce that if we wanted to, or?
We could enforce that if we wanted to.
So, we do have something to that effect.
Right, and I believe a lot of that falls to the director, Public Works, making a determination. Like seeing if, if it were reported or seen, it's making a call on if there's a safety issue.
Okay. But we don't have any driveway cutoff. We only have the corner cutoff on visibility.
Correct.
Because I did notice, like for example, in Santa Barbara, I think they had a driveway cutoff as well.
They have a driveway, correct. So, interior lots would be subject to the driveway, right?
And so, so as of now, there, you haven't really, there's been no evaluation or examination of the complete streets data in terms of how this, bringing this into the fence heights and walls?
No, we have not done that yet.
Okay, okay. I think that's, that's all my questions for now.
Ray, you had a question?
Thank you, thank you.
Are we discussing only residential properties or commercial properties as well?
We're discussing everything, but residential's clearly been the focus of the discussion. But, right, it could be, could certainly be, again, where you're downtown, where you have a lot of mixed use and the transition from commercial to residential, it would apply to both.
In my own experience in terms of safety in the neighborhoods, I'm driving slow enough. If I can't see, it's like the oneness is on me to drive safely and stop at the stop signs and look for kids and like that. In the commercial areas, like right here where Blanch hits Ojai Avenue and where the Bank of America is, there's a hedge on that corner. The only way I can see is if I pull in, pull out and block the crosswalk. And then on multiple occasions, people have to walk behind my car because I can't see at all there. And I think there, there clearly needs to be a distinction between properties like that. And I don't know if it's a different ordinance or a different, you know, kind of policy or guideline and who owns that property and how do we, you know, really make those busy intersections truly safe?
I agree. And I think what you're talking about, I think, involves a raised planter. And then you've got the rosemary growing in the raised planter. So, you've got both. You've got a structural thing with the plant growing up and that added height blocks visibility.
I think overall, we need, we need to deal with the public safety side of it. And that should not matter whether it's a structure or a plant. I did have a couple of questions, though. One of your, one of your things here said, it mentioned the phrase "high-quality design." For me, that's sufficiently vague as to be unenforceable. It comes down to someone's aesthetic opinion. So, I'm not sure how we would use that. And I'm asking your advice, since you have a lot of experience in this area. How, how would you use a phrase like "high-quality design" to say that whatever it is has to be done in that way?
Well, that was for the presentation. If I were writing that into a code or a guideline, I would not use that phrase as a standalone. If you're going to say you want high-quality design, you need to say what that is.
Okay.
So, probably specify materials. I, I think the bigger issue again is where you're, if you're trying to say you want to preserve neighborhood character, look at that neighborhood and what are the things you like about it and put that into your guidelines, put that into your code. Again, if there's areas, I always look at planning, if you either want to preserve or you want to change. And where there's areas you may want to see change or you may be more open to people doing things that don't match what's already there, then you could specify that. But you're right in terms of talking at a presentation, high quality could mean many things to many people. I wouldn't want to put a phrase like that in because it's just too subjective.
Second question. Oh, Lord. We'll have to come back. The second question just flew out of my head. Oh, when does a series of bushes become a hedge?
I wish I didn't remember that question. Because that's one of the things you wrestle with is, right now, there's no definition for that. And I think about that even like walking around Ojai where, like many places, somebody has four different species of shrub planted next to each other that have grown into each other. Maybe there's a gap at some point too.
Or not.
And again, which is another reason, I think, in terms of regulating hedges, I think there are some things you could say, that's a hedge, I know it when I see it. But there are some things, maybe it's a series of shrubs. I don't know. We don't define that and that would be tough to get a hard, accurate definition where everyone agreed on it. But that's exactly the kind of thing you have to think about in terms of regulating this issue. I, I know one discussion I sort of had offline where I had some examples pointed out to me related to hedges in the front yard where they were just essentially overgrown plants. I don't know that they were ever a hedge. They might have been.
Or ever intended to be, yeah.
And then, of course, one of the goals is if you're driving to say, I want to see the front of the house to maintain neighborhood character, if the entire front yard isn't maintained and what you can see of the house doesn't look too attractive, you may have them cut down their hedge to look at a house that isn't terribly attractive. So, just as a sort of sidelight to that. But the, the hedges issue is clearly more complicated than regulating fences and walls.
Right.
Walls are probably the most clear in terms of a solid wall. And I think, you know, Commissioner Jagiello brought that up with, you can have an ugly three-foot wall. It's just three feet instead of five. But a lot of this, again, you're getting into a very qualitative area and some of the frustration may be because you've only had a code to deal with it. And codes, again, are just very simple and don't really solve problems where you're talking about more qualitative things, safety aside. I think safety is kind of its own area. But the question there about when is a series of shrubs become a hedge or what is a hedge? Those are the sort of things you have to think about. Especially, again, as I say, as it's set further back from the public area. I normally think of a hedge as, it's something living that functions as a clear border. It's designed to screen. It's not necessarily there just for landscaping attractiveness. It, it has a purpose. But it is harder to define without question. And that's like, as I look at this, I try to think about what are those tough conversations going to be?
You have, I'd like to hold the discussion until we have the public speak.
Okay.
If we have more questions of staff, then I think we should clear that up now so that everybody has the context. All done then? All right, let's, I have, I have two cards here. First is Bill Miley.
For the record, for the record, my name is Bill Miley and I've lived here a long time. I'm here tonight because a fence does not require a permit in the city of Ojai, right?
Typically not unless it were high enough and had to have footings where it would require a structural permit. Normally, no.
Right. So, we need a new section in the ordinance, in the ordinance of hedges, fences and walls to cover building a fence. Currently, our city does not require a permit or any type of authorization for building a fence. I'm sure in the past, there were good reasons for that. But behaviors have changed in the past few years with fences being built to the wrong heights, wrong locations. And in one well-known event, a fence turned into a concrete block wall with a retaining wall foundation 200 feet long. And this was at the end of North Signal Street on the Pratt Trail. Interestingly, the contractor involved came to the planning desk and said, I want to build a fence. He was told rightly so. No permit was needed. He left, went to the building site and promptly started building a concrete wall. I have pictures of the three clear violations I want to show you tonight. And I unfortunately didn't make nine copies. So, a couple of you will have to share. These are three that, excuse me, hold on.
What do we share and you can give that one to Sherry.
If you will hold this so it's horizontal. The picture on the right is a house at the corner of Grand and Shady Lane. About three or four months ago, I was driving over to Soul Park and I came around the corner and I saw a construction crew putting in steel posts in the front of the house, all the way around. I have marked those with sharpies. And they had a lumber pile over in the corner that they were going to use to make a six-foot fence. I called Sherry. She got the code enforcement officer out, stopped it within an hour, okay? It's still there. They don't have the, they took the posts out, but all the fence material is still in the pile. The one below is at the corner of Grand Avenue and Park. That house was up for sale about six months ago. It had a low fence all the way around it for years. And suddenly, one day, there was a six-foot fence all the way along Grand Avenue and all the way along Park on the property line. I called, but somebody, several people had called before that. The code enforcement officer came out, told them it was illegal and they took the whole thing out. They didn't have to do that. They just could have taken the side part on Park. And they rebuilt it to what it looks like today. So, it cost them a lot of money. It cost the city and so on. Now, the one at the bottom here is on the Pratt Trail at the top of Signal. That is the six-plus-foot concrete block wall, which has been stuck over. That was the big problem about four years ago. Contractor said, I want to build a fence. He ended up building this. We formed a group. We stopped it. They red-tagged it. It went to the city attorney. It went to this former city manager, former city attorney. And what do you know? It was 90% completed and the former city planning director gave them a permit. It could have been, if it came for a design review, it could have been a rock wall. A pretty great-looking rock wall, which would have added to the city. So, my concern is that we don't have a permit. So, I'm suggesting that the city planning commission consider adopting, I suggest you might consider creating an information permit approach to guiding the building of fences. It would become part of the ordinance. It would be cost-free or maybe a minimum cost. The purpose would be to register the applicant as wanting to build a fence with a drawn description of what they intended to do. A statement from the ordinance would tell them what they could do and then they would sign it. We, the city would have a registration. The person building it would know what they could do. And if they did it wrong, it would be easy to code enforcement and tell them if they had done this to take the wall down because they told they were building a fence and they lied. So, I have talked to the city council about this and I think they suggested that the planning commission consider developing a permit approach to fences. All fences wouldn't cost very much, but it would give everybody a guideline as to what was permitted and what wasn't. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. And we have Jane Spiller.
Hi, I'm Jane Spiller. I live at 202 Pauline Street. And I'm glad you seem to be having a very thoughtful discussion of this issue. I think it definitely merits being part of the general plan discussions. Glad to hear they're coming up. I think it definitely merits being part of the general plan discussions. Glad to hear they're coming up. In the meantime, I suppose you will probably be fine-tuning the current ordinance, the very rigid, inflexible ordinance. And I wanted to ask that you pay some attention to the side yard and backyard fences also. In particular, for transitional properties. Luke mentioned that for industrial properties, there isn't automatic height allowance for side yard fences. Is that right?
There is a six-foot citywide and in industrial areas, I know you can exceed even that. So if you say you have an industrial to a residential, I think you can go to seven feet automatically under the current code.
And can you go higher than seven?
Not without a variance.
Well, I would like to ask you to consider extending that also to commercial properties and particularly residential properties that are next to commercial properties. Because you have a situation there where you have two very incompatible uses. And sometimes the city has allowed conditional use permits, which have in effect created commercial properties like hotels next to residential properties. And so the residents needs to have the protections of privacy from that commercial use.
This Pauline Street is right alongside the Emerald Iguana?
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
And, and my property is in fact. And so there's a, a hotel parking lot next to my property. And there's also light that intrudes into my property from the hotel. And of course, a lot of noise and people coming and going from their cars, driveway noise, that kind of thing. And so you need to be able to facilitate that kind of a residence getting an exception without having to come to the city and require a zoning variance, which I think is the current law. So it should not cost anything. Probably when the project was built, it should have been required to build a privacy screen. But since that didn't happen, now, you know.
Now you'd like to build one.
I would, yeah.
Okay. Are you suggesting that, that a commercial property owner be mandated to put up tall fences?
Well, probably when these projects are just.
The adjacent residential be allowed to put up tall fences?
Uh, well, if you can catch it early enough when the project is being developed, you could incorporate, incorporate that into the project. But after the fact, I think it's better to allow the resident to protect their property. So that's what I'm asking. And I hope it'll be ministerial or some way that won't cost money and have to go through extensive city review, which I don't think is necessary. A lot of progressive cities actually allow seven and eight-foot side yards. And so I think Ojai should consider that in their, you know, reevaluation of side yard and backyard fences. And also I like to hear people talking about flexibility. That's certainly part of the Ojai way and that should be always remembered. So yeah, those are my main points and I'm just hoping that you can take something back to the city council that will deal with this issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Uh, that's, that's all the cards that I have. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this agenda item? All right, then we'll close, it's not a public hearing, but we'll close the public comment portion and bring it back to the commission. My feeling is that, that we need to take care of the public safety issues. This is not, this is corners and interior lot driveway visibility, right? Not, it's not the right-of-way, but it's visibility of other traffic, whether it's cars or pedestrians or bicycles. My personal preference would be that once we have dealt with that, that we stop dealing. That people be allowed to do what they want with their own yards and their own shrubs. I think it would be very helpful if staff could find someone, somewhere who has differentiated between a series of bushes and a hedge. Because we don't regulate a series of bushes, we do regulate hedges right now. And I don't know if anyone has ever, has ever definitively made that distinction, but I think it would be helpful. I have a series of, I'll call it a series of oleander bushes in my front yard. You can't see through between them because they're all 60 or 70 years old and they're, I keep cutting them back down to where they're only about eight feet tall. I don't know if you call that a hedge or you call that a series of bushes or because it's 70 years old, you leave it alone. I, I think we could use some clarity there. But my, my personal preference is that people be able to screen their yards if they want to, so long as it doesn't pose a problem for public safety. And that, as, as we have talked about, it's not just corners, it's interior lots and people zooming out of driveways. There are a number of streets around here where, and, and my neighborhood is, is a good example. There are obstructions at both ends. There's only two ways out of my street. And there are visual obstructions in both cases. But in one at least, I can, I can stop at the stop line where the stop sign is. And then I can pull forward in what is in effect a parking lane to where most of the time, because there usually aren't a lot of cars parked in the area, I can see the oncoming traffic. At the other end, I can't because there's a block wall there. It's actually only three feet tall, but it has occasional posts that are taller with wrought iron between. And those posts make the, make the wall effectively between four and five feet tall. And it's, it's a dangerous situation. So I tend not to leave my neighborhood that direction. But those are my thoughts. Once we get past that, I'd like to let people do whatever they want. So. Go ahead, Chester.
I'd like to chime in on the, on the existing code that actually I think works to, to some degree. And that's the height restrictions in the front yard setback. And, but I'd like to increase the rear yard and side yard setback, uh, not setbacks, but height of, of fences. Because I do think there are many conditions whereby six-foot doesn't quite screen, uh, what you need to screen with your neighbor. And it, and it really, it's not seen.
John and I can testify, our eyes are about six feet.
Yeah.
So I can see right over a six-foot fence.
Exactly. So, you know, I think an eight-foot restriction, you know, a limitation to that would be appropriate and, and not hurt anyone there. So, so I do agree with that. I, I think, I do think public safety is paramount, you know, and so we should be concerned about that. And that's, that, that creates the problem with the hedges. And, and the problem with the hedges is, is an enforcement issue.
Yes.
And so that's to me, one of the biggest challenges that we have to somehow figure out how to deal with. And is how do you, how do you enforce a hedge height? Because ultimately it is still important and we, I want to make sure we have that built into our, our, our guideline.
Probably one of those, like many other things in the code, where it's complaint-driven.
Right. And then how do you enforce?
I, I can't see a code enforcement officer driving around town.
With a hedge?
With, no, but with a three-foot, with a meter stick.
Right.
Measuring everyone's hedges.
Does he cut the hedge?
That.
You know?
But yeah, and then issuing citations or something, that doesn't seem like the Ojai way.
Well, that's the, to me, that's one of the biggest challenges because like Luke said, the, the fence height and any kind of solid structure is easy to, easy to, you know, kind of put a number on it. Um, and kind of, and a setback and we can quantify that. And so I think the challenge lies in the, in the hedge and the plant material myself. And I, I just don't know how to, how to solve that problem.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Well, the nice thing about having the design guidelines is you can have definitions in the design guidelines. And typically, and you know, don't quote me on this, but a hedge is typically, it's like a living green wall. So it's planned with the intention of continuity, density, and then of course achieving a certain height. Now, a way that we could, within the design guidelines, control the height to a degree because plants are like people, you can't say they're going to be exactly a certain height. And they do require maintenance. We could have a list of hedge material that we know will work in Ojai that maybe doesn't exceed a certain height. If somebody has an exception or maybe in the design guidelines, if it's a larger property, it happens to be, it's say in the Arbolata or Delauro or maybe Persimmon Hill because of the acreage. In the front, you could have a higher fence or hedge. So, but I think that could be easily handled in the design guidelines.
Go ahead, Bobby.
How about enforcement though, Kathy? That's, that was my biggest question.
Well, the enforcement is if you, if you had a, a list of hedges or shrub material that you could use for a hedge in the front yard. Let's say, I, I would think we may even want to do it neighborhood by neighborhood. It doesn't have to be that complicated, even though what I'm saying may sound like it is. And I am a landscape architect and I do these kind of things, so I'm pretty good with the plant material. It, the list doesn't have to be overly extensive, that you could to a degree, if you listed those plants, handle a portion of the maintenance issue because these certain plants don't get over, say, six feet or 10 feet or three feet. And there are, there is hedge material that you can use in that application. So it would help, but at the same time, um, and this is, I, here's the other thing. Is this just for projects that are coming in and getting permitted or?
That's my next point.
Is anyone, for instance, a homeowner could just say, oh, I really want to.
Retroactive rule?
Exactly. And then how do we go back because for safety reasons?
Where you don't have to pull a permit. And so how do you regulate and control that? And that gets back, now you're back at the enforcement.
Enforcement, yeah, code enforcement. And then how do we actually enforce it?
I have one question. So, so with, the issue is with existing fences, is that right?
With?
Existing, uh, hedges, existing hedges. And, and what, I mean.
And fences and walls.
And going forward. It's, it's, existing is what I think triggered the discussion, but I think it's like, how do you want to handle it going forward as well?
But I thought that the big controversy was really dealing with existing hedges.
That's how it started, I think.
Probably more than hedges.
Bubble of that a few years ago.
Okay. And so how big of a problem is this? I mean, what are we, what are we really talking about?
It probably depends who you're talking to. I mean, that, that's kind of the, the issue. And again, there's, the safety thing seems to be fairly unanimous with where there's a safety issue, solve it. Whether it's a hedge, a fence, a wall, that should be cleared up. The where, is it a, is it a problem and how big it is, is more the design, community character issue. And I think particularly with hedges, some people don't see an issue at all. Some people do see an issue where they want a certain height kept because they want the frontage of the house in the relation to, to the street to be maintained. They don't want an obstacle or a barrier in between there. But for me, I don't know if there's consensus or how strongly the community feels. And I think that's largely why we're here on that issue.
We're not getting a big community sample yet.
Right. But, but what you're talking about is, is new, new hedges with the design review and going for a.
Yeah, for going forwards. So I think it's a combination of, you know, we have some existing conditions now where, you know, like I said, we, with complete streets, we went and ran and we actually documented. We had, we have these data sheets where we cited intersections where there, there is an issue. And what Ray brought up is an excellent point and this has to do with on the commercial frontage. I think that needs to be definitely, I think all properties need to be in the design guidelines. But on Ojai Avenue, there's numerous places where you're trying to pull out and you can't see and you're edging forward and then you're cutting off pedestrians and it's not safe.
First you cut off the pedestrians, then you pull into a parking lane if there is one.
Right. Yeah. So, so it definitely, it's, it's for existing and going forward.
I mean, I think also what Commissioner Nolan said too, that the hedges gets really problematic because it doesn't require a permit. Homeowner can do it himself. And there's no violation when they first plant it. Unlike a fence or a wall, if you see six-foot posts going in and there's a three-foot limitation, it's, it's easy to go out and stop it. The hedge, somebody can plant it and it's a foot high when they put it. There's no, there's no problem until the future when you know it's going to become one. That, again, yeah, so.
Go ahead, Bobby.
Well, I, I agree with your take on it, which is that if it's a safety issue, then you address it. You figure out how to handle it. And beyond that, I think people should be able to do what they want to on their own property. Quite frankly, I don't think we should dictate that. And I think it's really complicated. You get into incredible permitting issues and design review and, and opinions. And there are so many very high hedges in this town that are gorgeous. And I would be really kind of horrified to see those cut down, quite frankly.
Well, I think we're, we're focused on safety. I think safety is really the main issue there.
I, I agree.
Not, not a, not a ordinance where all hedges need to be three feet if there are.
I agree. I think that if there's a problem at a particular intersection, if there's a problem, then that needs to be addressed. But beyond that, I don't think that that's something that we should come up with some convoluted guideline to deal with because I think that it's, I mean, there are certain situations where a big hedge would, is an asset for sure. And it has to be, I really think that people should be able to do what they need to on their property.
I did have another question, Luke, when, when we were talking, when you and I were talking before. Uh, I said, so this limitation is for the first 40 feet back from the public right-of-way or to the closest surface of the house, whichever is closer.
Setback is, it's 25, it's whatever the setback is.
Well, I have an 80-year-old house and part of it's only 20 feet back from the public right-of-way. But they didn't make me move it when I remodeled. That would have been painful. But if, if a, if, if we're talking about, say, a large lot on the Arbolata, where, where there are a large number of houses, I think that, that are anywhere from 75 to 100 feet back from the public right-of-way. Just refresh our memories if you would. Does the, does the code right now allow beyond 40 feet from the public right-of-way, allow a homeowner to put up a fence or wall of an arbitrary height?
Yeah, the 40 feet I just said as an example. I mean, what dictates you're subject to the three-foot height limitation for essentially your entire front yard?
No matter what it is.
No matter how big the front yard is.
Yeah, if it's a 20-foot setback, it's a 20-foot.
And again, that's something that could be clarified because I know typically, you know, in, in planning or people come into the counter to ask for information, setbacks are usually what is thought of as what's the minimum required area, which is typically like 20, 25 feet. Some of the large lots in Ojai do require 40, but these are the very large lots. In terms of though, looking at the height application for fences, hedges and walls, it's dependent on where your front property line is and where the face of your house is. If you had an accessory dwelling unit, for instance, in your front yard, which we had one, it would be to the face of the accessory dwelling unit's wall because it's closest to the front property line. So again, it's this relational thing where it makes sense why you treat the properties differently, but you are treating them differently. But it, it's really dependent on where your house sits.
They're treating them differently in, in a precise way. It's not, it's not, you get this set of rules and he gets that other set of rules because I like him.
Correct. There's, there's a rational, explainable basis for it, but it's one of those things, I just want to make sure there's an awareness that the setback isn't determined by looking at the code for what your minimum setback is. It's where your house sits in relation to that sidewalk. That's where that three-foot height limitation is.
Okay. Another question for you and perhaps for Sherry because she's, she's been here longer than you have. How do you, how do you sense a citizen coming in to talk about anything in terms of setbacks has a clear understanding of where the street is and where the public right-of-way is? Is that, is that something that's generally clear in people's minds or is it, or is it really muddy?
No, there is a way we explain to them how to, how to calculate it, but also.
But they don't come in understanding it necessarily.
No, not typically.
Yeah.
Where their front property line is. But we, I did want to clear up that Mr. Miley said we don't have a process, but we do require zone clearances for, for walls, fences, walls and edges. Not building permits, but.
But without a permit, without a clearance permit.
From what I understand in my process going into the city and getting it, it's always, it's the face of the house. And the face of the house has always been the, the rule of the thumbs where the, the front setback is usually the face of the house. I mean, it's typically there. So, you'll see, drive around, you'll see that's where the fences are, that's where the entry is.
Current three-foot limitation doesn't depend on where the face of the house is.
It does, in the front, in the front yard setback it does.
It could be a hundred yards back from the street.
No, it's, it's only three-foot height to the face of the house.
That's what I'm saying. If the face of the house is a hundred yards back from the street, the three-foot limitation applies to that whole hundred yards?
Not necessarily on a big lot like that. That's what, in most cases, no. Then, then there's a forty-yard setback or whatever it is in that particular neighborhood, like the Arbolata. But if you're in most of the neighborhoods in town where they're, they're pretty tight on that twenty-five to forty-foot setback, usually to twenty-five, which is most of the houses here, that's, that's the setback right there, twenty-five. So, that's the face of the house.
Twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty in the front.
Twenty in the front.
I seem to recall an applicant a year or two ago on Mercer Street that they were changing a carport to a garage and a whole bunch of other things, but they were also putting a five-foot tall wood fence across part of the front of the house. Now, this was set back well from the street, but I don't know that it was forty feet from the right-of-way.
Twenty feet in that zone.
In my case.
It was twenty feet back.
My street is nominally fifty feet right-of-way, but the paved part is thirty-five. So, there's seven and a half feet on what I would typically think of as my property that is public right-of-way.
Yeah, I remember that house you're talking about.
Come in and pave that if they wanted to and make a wider street.
Yeah. That was the one Steve Foster designed, the one with the, the, the fence in the front yard setback.
Okay, okay, but.
Well, he came before prime commission, so that's what I'm saying.
He came in with a, they came in with a design review permit. There were a bunch of other things in there. Yeah.
No, no, it wasn't, it was.
Oh, wait a minute. Wait, either the three-foot height limit applies to the front face of the house or it doesn't.
It, it does. Essentially, think about, if you throw the word setback out, just think, your front yard has a three-foot height limit. And your front yard is the area between the right-of-way and your closest wall to the right-of-way.
All right, and this, this clearly fell into that.
That time, it wasn't being interpreted that way.
And that's why I raised this, is I think it has been interpreted both ways.
Okay, but also the setback.
The setback is from the property line, not, not anything to do with the street right-of-way, correct?
Right, property line, correct.
Property line to house.
Right.
Three and a half foot high now. So, I don't know how that guy, three and a half, or three.
Santa Barbara's three and a half.
Santa Barbara's three and a half.
So, he did something.
Well, yeah, he applied for a DRP, you know, design review permit, and when, when you do that, there's all kinds of things that can happen. But I don't, I'm not sure exactly why, but I remember it.
It was because it was being interpreted as twenty feet from the front property line, not to the, but we've recently pointed out to us from someone higher up, that we were interpreting incorrectly up until six months ago when Luke started.
Where I think there's, again, that, it's how you're using the term setback. It might be more helpful to clear that up if you did a code change to just refer to a front yard, which some codes do, and a setback. Because I think when you use the term setback, people that deal with this, they always think of a minimum requirement. You cannot build or put something in, needs to be an open area. But when we're talking about this, where the three-foot height limit applies, it's really that yard area. So, it's, it's not the same for everyone, even if you're in the same zoning district.
Right.
That's, that's really the issue. So, I think there has been some.
Height limit is in the front yard, not in the setback.
If, if it's.
The set, well, they're both different from house to house.
Height limit applies if it's between the front of your house and the sidewalk. So, that's, that's it. If it's flush with your house.
Whether it's, so if you're setback further than the twenty feet, if you're twenty-five, that's your, that's your, that's your limitation.
Then that becomes front yard, not setback.
We've always taken the face of the house as, in most cases, and not, not in these larger lot houses as the place where that fence stopped.
That's the new way we're doing it.
Right, well, that's how, we, that's why I've always done it, actually. But actually, you presented that to, to me many times before on that issue. And I remember that because I got, I get real clear on that, because I don't want to, I don't want to build anything that gets, has to be torn down.
Can I, can I ask Chester or Kathy, what, what is your feeling about, in most jurisdictions, as far as I know, the, the, normally there is a reduced height requirement for fences and walls in the front setback area, but that's typically a fixed, you know, it's your, your setback, twenty, twenty feet or twenty-five feet. It doesn't matter where the house is. And so.
Beyond that, you can do what you want.
So, it's different than, you know, in Ojai. So, how important do you think that is to maintain that? Or would it be okay to go back to a more, you know, when you say setback, you mean the setback, twenty or twenty-five feet, period? Do you think that that's actually important to the?
Well, typically, it's, from an architectural standpoint, the house itself, the fence in front of the house, unless there's a reason to screen, is, is what is, is, is the point. The point is to have a low wall so you can have visibility of the house. You can see more of the landscape, all, more of the, the greenery versus a solid, high wall. And also, there's a safety aspect to it. As you come out of your driveway, you know, you want, you want to be able to see, see over the top of it. That's, that's been the way it's been for a long time.
Yeah, so, so it sounds like it would be in keeping with the community, the way that it's developed, the way that it is now to maintain that.
Except for a couple of exceptions, and that's why people, like the five-foot setback from the sidewalk, you know, that we're, we were talking about. Some people want to make that, and, you know, get rid of that.
Yeah.
I personally like it, but.
Well, I did notice, yeah, I, I, I mean, I was kind of of the feeling, maybe it would be fine to put a fence up against the sidewalk. But I did notice in those photographs, even where they, where they had even an open fence, it was still, they had planting in front of it. So, there was still even a foot or two feet back.
That's why I don't like fences up to the walkway, because you don't get any plant material in front of it. And it just looks so stark. From an architectural standpoint, it's, it's just ugly.
And if you plant behind it and it comes cascading over or through.
Then you're going into the sidewalk.
Then it's in the sidewalk, so.
So, I'm, I'm not, again, aesthetically, I.
I, I think from where, oh, go ahead.
I don't understand why, you know, three-foot is this magic height. To me, it looks like a really stumpy proportion, except in a tiny little house with a tiny little picket fence. But mostly, three-foot looks kind of ridiculous. Why is four-foot less safe or less inviting or less, you see right over it?
Some of it has to do with your vehicle and seeing over while you're sitting in a vehicle.
I would like to not see the vehicle.
No, I'm saying when you're, when you're, when you're driving out of your driveway, you know, it allows you to see over the top of the wall.
Well, I, as I just said to you, don't think that the fence is the issue. I think the cars parked on the street are the thing that's hard to see. And if they parked a little bit further away, that would solve the issue rather than having a three-foot fence. Because you can have a six-foot fence, and if there's no car there, you can see when you get to the end of your driveway. If you have a three-foot fence and there's a car parked, you still can't see.
Well, unless it's a safety issue, unless it's a safety issue, to having a, that's where the hedges come into play. So, for privacy purposes, the three-foot keep, keeps it architect.
I don't think it's architecturally appealing. I find it proportionally unsatisfactory. So, there we get into the opinion part, which I think was discussed before.
Well, you don't want a fortress, how high are you talking then?
Four feet is much nicer height for a fence than three-foot. Three-foot, unless it's a tiny house, looks silly.
Well, this is just a thought. Depending on how we do this, I'm still in favor of the neighborhood planning because it addresses a different size lots and different characters. Some streets don't have sidewalks, some do. Some may get them, the street width is different, the context and character is different. So, I think that's important. But you could always say a maximum height, and if somebody wants a three-foot one, sure, they could have a three-foot one. But if you had a maximum, then you have the flexibility. And I think that's where you're going.
Right.
And, and then once again, safety number one, and that needs to be thrown into the mix.
And I want to address one other thing, which is you asked, you always come up with these good points. Is it clear to the homeowner? And I will say, now, I don't even know, because I was told that if I wanted to plant something, I had to plant it ten feet back. I don't know if that's because there's ten feet necessary for the public right-of-way or if that was five feet plus the five-foot setback. I don't know, I just said.
You're on Daly?
Yeah.
And Daly, Daly, it seems to me, has more than thirty-five feet of paving. So, that would.
For the width of the street.
For the width of the street. I would, it, it feels larger to me than my street, which is thirty-five feet paved. And I know there's seven and a half feet either side of the curbs that is public right-of-way.
Right, so, I think that all of those issues are unclear to the general public in terms of where your property line starts, where you can actually plant, where you can put a fence, how far back you have to set it.
Yeah, but you have to, you know, it's up to the property owner to have some responsibility to determine that. Because there's no other way, how else are you going to determine it? So, they have to have, either get a survey or figure that out. Whenever I build, whenever I build a fence, I get a survey.
What I'm saying is that when I came to the city and I said, what are the requirements? I was sent back and forth between building and public works and building public works.
Well, it.
Then I was told, set it back ten feet, which I told my landscape person, and that's what we did.
I mean, some of that is informational and educational. And I know the city does have a number of handouts, and, and it seems like there could be a fairly straightforward informational sheet on, you know, property line, right-of-way, where the fence can go, how high it can be. And, and that would, and then it's up to the, like Chester said, it's up to the property owner to find out where their, have their lines surveyed if they need to.
It's not easy, it's, it's not easy, but you.
Wildly expensive.
I know, but you have to have it. I mean, you can't do it. I mean, that's the point. You're going to put up a fence, you're going to be in a liability situation if you don't get it, period.
I, I think, one thing I have not heard about tonight, we've heard the word privacy a few times. But I'm, I'm curious what the, what the city ethos is regarding what my neighbors see of my house. Is it my decision? Is it the city's decision? Right now, we don't have a situation where the neighbors all vote on how tall a fence or hedge or whatever I'm allowed to have in my, in my front yard. The city decides that. But is it proper that the city decides how much passing pedestrians, bicyclists, and drivers see of my house? Or should that be my decision? And, and if it's my decision, then we have a lot fewer rules.
Exactly, well, it comes back to safety again.
Public safety aside.
So, so, public safety aside, I don't think, other than for hedges, see, hedges do wonders for getting, you know, for blocking views. And they don't have to be a solid structure. I think we regulate solid structures because I still don't believe in walled-off houses in, in, in the front yard setback. It's, it's ugly.
The key was, I don't believe.
Well, I, well, it's ugly, it's architecturally.
You think it's ugly, in your opinion, it is ugly.
Most people believe that a six-foot front yard setback with no setback that's right on the highway is a fortress, okay?
It just depends on where it's street and what it looks like, in your opinion.
No, no, wait a second. Let's, let's look at Ojai, okay, in general, in the neighborhoods. You go down, pick a street, okay, go down Drown, okay? Can you imagine, just imagine, six-foot-high walls on, on the curb in front of each house? How ridiculous would that look? It's not, it's, it's.
It looks like, it looks like where I came from, Orange County.
It gets back to, and, and I, I think maybe.
Right, scale of neighborhood.
Well, it gets back to the scale, but it, and I think, and I'm guessing, I guess I should say, and I don't know who made up the ordinance at what time, you know, with this five-foot setback and the three-foot height. When you go into the general plan and you start reading it, they bring up this small-town character, this neighborly, walkable community. And when you have that description, then you can start plugging in, well, if I'm going to have that, and that's what we want, well, you're not going to create a fortress, because then that's counterproductive to this small-town neighborhood, get to know your neighbor. So, I'm not saying that I'm a hundred percent for that, but I think that's where it came from. And then, once again, it gets back into, if we did go neighborhood by neighborhood, there's context, there's scale, the property sizes are different, once again, the street width, the sidewalks or no sidewalks, it all changes it. So, I think that, to me, safety number one, and then to go in and look at the neighborhoods is a way to address it.
So, it sounds like there's, so are we, are we kind of coming to a place where we're wanting to not restrict any of the front yard setbacks? I mean, to heights? I just want to get, see where everybody is on this.
General, I think there should be.
Okay, well, because, because I feel like we're going back and forth on that one.
Public safety aside, I would say yes.
That, yeah, you wouldn't, you want to abolish any restriction there.
I, I would, other than public safety issues.
And then how, I'd like to know whether other people.
I feel strongly, no, we do not want to move to a walled city situation. I just, I, to me, that feels very unfriendly. It's very antithetical to what Ojai has always been, in my opinion.
How about a hedged city?
So, I would be, I'm interested in, in regulating fence and wall heights. And with perhaps more restrictions on a, on a solid wall, less restriction on living hedges, because I think that they, they, somehow, they're very different than.
They're more organic in their aesthetic, yeah, they're, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Except for, dealing with hedges only where safety considerations are.
Exactly.
And allowing additional height for that.
Well, that's my, I think that's where I, I favor that as well, is that hedges are the tool. If you, if you don't restrict them, they could, they could do all the things you need a fence to do and be aesthetically appealing.
Even if they're ten feet tall, they could be aesthetically appealing, yes.
I'm, I'm not against that at all. So, I don't think we restrict that. I'm completely in agreement with Catherine there is we have plant material to do some of that work, but to, to sit there and to take all the restrictions off the front yard setbacks, to me, just from an architectural standpoint and a small community standpoint, just sounds like it's an open door to, to.
Pandemonium.
Yeah.
Other, other than for hedges, you're saying?
Yeah, hedges to me are organic, you don't see them as a wall, you just don't see it that way, you know? They're, they're, they give you that sense of privacy. And, yeah, maybe I can go up from three feet to forty-two, to two inches or something like that. But, but generally speaking, a low, a low wall and a fence in the front yard setback has worked for a long time.
Maybe it only has to go back ten feet.
Versus the, to the, to that.
Versus twenty-five or forty?
To me, I was, I was fine with the five feet, but they want to get rid of that, you see?
No, I'm saying the height.
It was nothing within five feet.
Maybe we can stop the low height.
And three feet high from there.
That's what I'm saying, nothing within the five feet, but they want to bring that to the, they want to bring that to the curb.
Back ten feet, doesn't have to be twenty-five feet back at the lower height. It'll still do the same.
Well, that's, that's what Santa Barbara has, right? And that's, and that's, that's, and I could, I could kind of be talked into that, from an aesthetic and architectural standpoint. And that's really, really where I'm coming from.
Because, you know, sometimes your neighbor is unsightly, and you really don't want to look at the seventy-two trucks that are in their yard and all the other things.
Well, that's the side yard, usually the side yards.
Yes, but no, I'm talking to, but it's.
Yeah, in, in that, in that front yard setback, yeah.
Yes, exactly.
I still, I think I have a problem with even a higher fence that comes out in front of, into the front yard. I mean, I would, I would consider higher, higher allowances for the side and rear yards. What we've traditionally limited to six feet, but we allow seven feet with a minor variance.
Yeah, it's, it's six feet, but clearly I look at neighborhood.
Yeah, it's, it's six feet, but clearly I look at neighborhoods, people typically have like the six foot fence, then with a footer more of lattice or something else on there. So if you were enforcing that from a code enforcement standpoint, you'd be going after a lot of properties.
You'd be tearing down lattices, yeah.
Right, but that's, that doesn't seem to be the big issue, so I think the big issue, I think where we should focus our attention, I, I think, I, I, tell me if I'm wrong, on the side yard and the rear yard setbacks, I think we're, there's a consensus to let them do whatever they want, up to, even up to eight feet, I, I have no problem with that whatsoever. Um, and so, that, that is, to me, not an, an issue, the issue is the front yard setback.
With one, uh, I, I, I will put a reservation out there on going up to eight feet, seven or eight feet in the side and rear yards, because, um, okay, but I say, you know, you've got a neighbor, so you might want it, but you've got a neighbor, and believe me, where I live, um, that would really affect me, and it would make me feel like I was the person who was walled in. If they're allowed to go to seven or eight feet, so I think that some, I, I think I would be willing to be, to consider flexibility, and particularly, as Jane's talked about, where there's a, a different zo, you're budding a different zone, or commercial use.
There is something in the code that says if two neighbors agree on a higher height, isn't there, that they can do that?
Yes, there is.
That's what I was getting to, uh, yeah, so if, something-
Don't get to grant each other very-
I could see moving toward allowing more flexibility in height with the side and rear yards, but somehow there has to be worked in some neighbor agreement with that, I think, so.
Kathy, you referring to the flexibility height on a hedge, or?
Oh, no, I'm talking about the structures.
Oh, yeah, so the structures, I, I agree with you, I would have a limitation, whereas the hedge, I would allow, allowed to be taller.
Well, of course, but side yard and rear hard hedges, they can go eighty feet, who cares?
Yeah.
Um, that's, that's a non, non-issue.
People plant, plant rows of cypress trees.
But I thought, I thought we were gonna be a little bit more flexible on the height of the six foot, you know, on the, on the side, in the rear, in the rear yard. I find that a six foot is fairly low for most people, and it's, uh, especially if, and most neighbors that, you know, being in the construction business, want a higher fence, most people like the privacy from each other, and it's out of respect, not that they dislike each other.
Backyard privacy, yeah.
Yes, backyard privacy. So I, I, I think that we can talk about the possibility of giving it a six, but giving some kind of exemption, you know, that an easy way to get it to eight feet, you know, if, you know, I don't know how we would incorporate, you know, an option to do that on.
Your neighbor agrees.
Why, why make it an option, just make it eight feet?
Well, that's my opinion, I think, I think people will get along and figure it out in the end, 'cause most people who do fences talk to each other. I, I, I've learned that, and-
Do we, do we have rules in, in the city here about enclosing a pool?
Yes, that's-
Yeah, it depends on, that's a code issue, depending.
Yeah, okay, and what's the rule?
Without a cover, you need a five foot fence.
Still, you have to put a fence around a pool.
Only without a cover, yeah.
If you don't have a cover, if you have a cover that's approved, you-
Yeah, you don't have to have a fence.
That's not true anywhere, there's new codes.
What's changed though? Do you have to have the fence too?
Three safety measures.
And the door?
The door alarms, the pu, the pool, so, what's this?
There's a number of safety measures they can select from, but they need three.
Right, but usually they could avoid the fence.
'Cause I have, I have one neighbor who has a hard fence around a pool, I think it's a six foot fence around the back.
Yeah, FIFO's code.
Another one has a wrought iron fence.
Yeah.
So-
They can have that, as long as it's within four inches of-
It's a completely transparent fence-
Yeah.
Surrounding the pool.
Yeah.
With or without a cover. And I guess they're both legal?
Yeah. Yeah, and that's a security issue, where you're required to have it, that, which is, yeah, not, that's kind of like a whole separate issue, I, I mean, I think tonight, we're really trying to tackle that whole front yard issue, and I realize it's, it's easy to go off, but I mean, I think the main issues are height, then are we treating, and it sounds like there's more consensus on treating hedges differently from fences or walls, is what I'm hearing.
Absolutely, yes.
'Cause I'm trying to think what would help, when we come back, and maybe like using the Santa Barbara guidelines as a basis. You've really got overall height, is three feet okay, or somewhat higher, and then how do we go from there? How do you factor in setbacks?
Well, Santa Barbara uses forty-two inches, I could do forty-two inches, I could see how that's a more appealing height.
I could, I could-
Or feet, I get, I cringe, because it's a plywood sheet height, you know, and I, and just see plywood everywhere, yeah.
And the ten foot setback, which is for visibility on ingress egress on driveways.
Right, driveways, this is, this, this sheet right here, as they show that, which makes a lot of sense, yeah. So that's why I was thinking, if we use the Santa Barbara guidelines, identify the, the points that we, we wanna really discuss and nail down, isolate them, and, and just go for, 'cause I think it's really down to about two or three different issues that we're really talking about here, and it's, you know.
Yeah, 'cause that's, I, I just wanna try to focus, again, and I realize it's a very broad general issue, but to kind of focus, what are the key things, at least like, that I'm hearing?
Right.
And like, at least that differentiating hedges, got it, sounds like there's more tolerance for greater height.
Except for safety.
With that, and again, I, I was, everything's like, safety's its own category, where there's a safety issue.
I sense a lot of tolerance for taller fences or walls back in side yards.
Yeah, side and back.
There's still a lot of disagreement here about height in the front yard.
Yeah.
Right.
And setbacks, too. I, I don't think I'm in agreement on, on, on bringing it up to the sidewalk at all, I just think that's-
I think what I heard was setback and front yard are two different-
They are, so I'm-
They're two different words.
Exactly.
But in practical, in practical sense, they're the same.
Well, when I, when I'm speaking of the term-
The rules apply to the front yard.
Right.
No matter what the setback is.
Okay, when I, when I use the term setback, which I think is, uh, best to agree on how to use the term, because it's, it is, it could be, there's the legal setback with a capital S, uh, of the, of the structure itself, and then there's the setback, the distance from a certain point to the fence, you know, so, for instance, the sidewalk, if you're talking about the, um, if there's a sidewalk on a, on a property, to the edge of the public right of way, you know, that's, whatever that distance is, we can set that as a setback, that's a setback.
Why don't we talk about from the curb, 'cause a lot of places don't have a sidewalk.
Well, you need to say edge of the public right of way.
I think we need to address both, because-
Public right of way is, is certainly, the edge of the public right of way is certainly a legally definable term.
And it's different on every-
It's different on every width street.
Yep.
But-
But it's a, that's the line we're talking about.
If, if you talk about from the curb, then you're back to people thinking that the public right of way belongs to them.
No, I'm saying, let's talk about the setback from the curb that is the public right of way.
But not every street has a curb, so that's why you-
We don't have a sidewalk.
Well, you need to, well, that's the thing, if you say it's the edge of the public right of way, that's-
So what do I do, measure from the middle of the street? That's what I did, that is what I did, I measured from the middle of the street.
Yeah. So twenty-five feet from the middle of the street, in most cases, that's the edge of the public right of way.
Well, I mean, everybody needs to, is responsible for knowing where their front property line is, and, and, and personally, I think that's where we need to focus on, because that's the owner's responsibility.
So, so we can say this-
The owner needs to be able to go to a definitive person to tell them how that's done.
Uh, by the way, so what's happening, because we just, we just had our property line survey, because we did have a common line fence, uh, built with our neighbor, and it was a very amicable situation. Um, and we did work together, and it was really great, but, um, what's happening is where the, where the city is, um, coming in and, um, putting on new asphalt on the streets, they're covering up all the survey markers.
All the what?
The survey markers.
Little brass.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, they're being covered up, and it's not in the contract that the, that the pers, that the street contractor is putting in the new asphalt, have to replace those, or make sure that they're, so we're losing all of that valuable information, which, which makes the, um, the surveyor had to go farther away-
It's expensive, yeah, you just gotta go to the point of shoot, yeah.
To do your, anyway, just a little side note, but, uh, that has to really, the building appeals board, or somebody ought to be, uh, addressing that issue, because it's a citywide issue. But, uh, but my, in my opinion, the property line is a fixed line, it doesn't vary according to the street size, or the right of way. The right of way needs to be left as it is, because maybe someday we want a sidewalk going in on some of these streets.
So that's, so, so what I wanna re, uh, reiterate is that, to me, to use the term setback, if we could agree that the setback is the distance from the right of way, you know, to whatever the, whatever the item is we wanna create, so, so to, so the, so it begins at the right of way, okay, not the, not the property line, correct?
In this case, you're, you're using the setback to say, within the setback, you can't do X.
Or, or we're using the term as, the setback of the wall is-
Oh, I see, okay, sure.
See, that's what I'm trying to say, 'cause that's our, that's what we have to determine here, is the setback of the wall. Or, or, we either have to bring it to the right of way, 'cause that's what we're being asked to do, get rid of that five foot that's existing now.
I'd like that.
And to me, if we, if we, we just wanna be clear that we're using the term in the same way, we're understanding how we're using it. And, and so what I'm suggesting is that, when we're, let's solve that one problem, and talk about it as a setback from the right of way, to determine where we would like to see a structural built, or, you know, like, a structural fence, either a CMU wall, or a fence built, so that's all I'm saying. And then there's the legal setback of the, the, the house.
Right, okay.
But the five foot, the five foot is from the property line now.
Yes, it's where the property line and the public right of way-
It's from the right of way, yes.
Yeah, but I, I like to call it the property line.
Yeah.
So I, I'm getting, that's why I was getting confused, so.
Right.
I would ask, um, Luke, is, you're saying setback, we, basically what we're trying to do right now is define, what's the terminology?
Yes, because people get confused.
So is there another way to say it, or something in the code, or could you help us out here, please?
There, there probably is, I think the issue people get tripped on with setback is they think of it as code-driven, but when we're talking about, again, for the topic tonight, it's not a specified number you can look up, you need to know where the relate-
Need to define it, right?
It's the, the distance between your front property line and the closest face of your structure. So, has nothing to do with the minimum required setback, this is your actual setback of your building to the front property line. And I think that's where the confusion came in. So either we call it like for the purposes of that diagram, or somebody's looking, saying, where does the three foot height apply to me now, is, you, maybe you just call it your front yard, and your yard is determined by your front property line to the closest wall of your house.
Okay, you, you mentioned-
Throw out the word setback.
And then we have the diff, yeah.
You, you mentioned earlier a situation in which an ADU was placed in a, in a front yard.
Correct, yeah.
So that, that decreased the size of the front yard.
Okay, this-
Because the front yard was now from the property line to the front face of the ADU.
Of the ADU, because it was closest, but this gets even more complicated, and I don't wanna stay here all night, but-
Behind that, what's the limitation? That, that three foot limitation that currently exists did not propagate past the front wall of the ADU, I take it?
Correct, it stops there, that's right, 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 in that case, it was a lot that had two structures. The main unit was set well back on a very deep lot. The person, this was not subdivided, it kind of functioned like a flag lot, so the question was, ADU was closest-
Right.
-to the street, but was still set way back.
But the front yard stopped at the front of the ADU.
At the front of the ADU, they wanted to build a fence or a wall behind the ADU to screen it from the main unit. There was also a swimming pool there, so it was essentially setting up the main unit with the pool screened from the ADU. So in that case, this was actually going to be like a rear yard fence for the ADU.
A flag lot is, a, a flag lot has no front fence.
It just wasn't subdivided, it was one legal lot with two structures, but again, it's, whether it's the main unit, accessory dwelling unit, whatever it is, it's the face of that wall to the front property line, that's, that's where that height limitation applies as of right now.
So I wanna, so for, I think, that some of the questions then for us to solve is what that distance is between the right of way, okay?
Yeah.
Not the property line, because there's, you, because we want to be able to maintain, I believe, the ability to have a sidewalk there at some point.
Yes.
Correct? And, and so that distance right now between the right of way, now, from what I understand, it's from the property line, the five foot is from the property line, not the right of way, correct?
It actually is from public rights of way.
Public rights way, okay, got it, that's what I thought, actually, I thought it was, so, so from the right of way.
That's not the same as the property line?
No.
It's public right of way.
No, it is.
'Cause they butt each other.
Yeah, it would be, the, the property line defines where the private property ends and the right of way begins, so it's, it's, they're synonymous, they're synonymous, right.
It's the same, okay, they're synonymous, okay, okay, so, okay, good.
Just to make it clear that it's a street frontage, it's, if you use the term public right of way, it doesn't throw you off, because the property line's gonna go all the way around the wall.
The right of way is not curb to curb, it's whatever the city defined the width of the street.
Right, so, yeah.
Right, okay, so the front, the front of, okay, so the property line, uh, right now, we have an existing ordinance that says five feet from the existing property line, okay?
It reads, fences, walls shall be set back a minimum of five feet from public rights of way.
That's what I was saying, but, but I was just told that they're the same.
They are the same.
So it's five feet-
We're, we're, yeah, they're the same.
Jerry is just saying the ordinance talks about that.
It's five feet of your private property.
Oh, I wasn't reading it, I was just-
It's five feet of your private property.
So if it's a corner lot, it applies on both sides.
Okay, so we're, we're saying the same thing then, five feet from the property line and from the right of way, okay, existing code, uh, that's, that's what we have on the books, right? And it's a three foot high.
Get rid of that.
Right.
Get rid of the five feet.
Okay, uh, well, that's, I think, a question, that, I don't think that's a given, myself, I think that's a discussion right there, uh, that we, we started here, and we have some, I, I, 'cause I'm not completely in agreement with that.
So maybe if you keep that setback, that five foot, you get more height.
Those are the issues I think we need to, we need to talk about, well, I'm zero, I'm trying to zero in on the, and the issues that we need to talk about, and that's one of them, is the distance between that, um, right now, that five foot distance, whether we get rid of it, whether we adopt the Santa Barbara, uh, version, which is a ten foot, um, distance, uh, to a higher, but it gives you a higher, um, uh,
Height.
Height of, of a structure that you can build within that distance. Or do we, you know, use that, uh, the set, the whole, right now, the three foot goes from the front yard setback, which is the face of the house, whether it's the legal setback or not.
Covers the whole front yard.
Yes, covers the whole front yard. So those are the kind of issues for the height, for the structures, I think we're in agreement that we, unless there's a safety issue, hedges are irrelevant to this discussion, they could do whatever they want, okay? So it's really now focused in on this, on this hard structure fence, wall situation, and the distances.
And distance from, distance from the right of way, and height of an allowable structure.
So here's, this is my comment, and, um, and this is where Santa Barbara, where they came up with that ten foot, if you will, setback.
Right, right.
Um, it has to do with your visibility, ingress, egress on the driveway. So if we start with the approach and create a safety template,
Yes.
that may be the start and help us set, okay, do we agree with Santa Barbara, or not? And then we can go from there and start, 'cause in Santa Barbara, I, I know I've worked on some residential properties there where I had to do the same thing, they wanted the screening, did the ten feet, but it could be, it was definitely a higher hedge.
Right.
I'm just throwing that out there, but I think if you-
But they're throwing hedges into it in Santa Barbara, we're, we're, we're getting rid of hedges.
I know, I know, but I think if you, once again, go back to the safety thing first, that's gonna help us determine what that number is going to be, if there, if there is a number, but if there is, it's gonna help us figure that out.
Uh, it seems that downtown, in the commercial area, there are places where things are pulled all the way out to the sidewalk, and there isn't a set book, and, and in some instances, it doesn't make sense to have that setback. So I think maybe that needs to be looked at separately.
That five foot setback business is probably the most violated part of the municipal code.
Yes.
I mean, I, I, I walk past a house on East Eucalyptus, where there's a split rail fence at the property line, and they have planted what would be the sidewalk or additional street in cactus, because they like cactus, but nobody's, uh, unless you tear it all out, nobody's ever gonna walk there, much less put a sidewalk there. And the fence, and the split rail fence is right at the property line, but it looks fine. But it looks fine, and there's no sidewalks in the neighborhood, and you walk in the street when you walk in the neighborhood.
So, what do we need to do to move this forward? That's what I want to ask, uh, to give Luke, what do you look at Luke?
Do you, do you have a sense yet of, of what the planning commission would recommend?
Or, or at least what we need to decide, I think that's the big, the big question. I think it comes to that front yard, you know, height, wall, and maybe we can, you know, look at the Santa Barbara code and define that a little bit better, and let's, let's look at our choices, you know? Uh, let's, let's outline two or three choices, or, or more, if there's more. But I think there's, generally, we're looking at the Santa Barbara code, which is that, that ten-foot setback. We can get rid of all set setbacks, we can get rid of all height restrictions, you know? Whatever the number is, let's say there's five or 10 choices, whatever they are. But can we define them so that when we come back next time, we can just go through this list and just hash out which ones we think would be most suited for, uh, a guideline?
Yeah, I, I think there's, a lot of what you heard tonight, I think I could come back with something that focuses. One, I got, hedges are different from fences and walls. Safety is safety, regardless of whether it's a fence hedge or a wall. So, that would take care of itself. Then I think it's like, I would say you take a topic at a time with, is the front yard the area where you want a height limitation period? Or is there some cutoff point where within the first X amount of feet, there's a height limitation? Then beyond that, you can exceed the height. And again, it sounds like it's more focused on structural things than hedges, from what I'm hearing. But I would start there, I'm not really getting into rear and side yards right now, because I don't think that was where the city council was going, not saying it's not an issue.
I think generally the feeling here is you can raise the height of side and back fences, and that's okay.
I, from what I've seen, Ojai's rear yards look like just about everywhere else. I think it's a pretty typical six-foot or more, there's nothing but seven-foot fences around, and I just don't think it's seen as an issue. It's, the code says something, it's not an issue, so no one's going to go out and enforce that.
Only an issue because the limit, the formal limit is six feet.
Right. But I, I think, yeah, I could try to take something as the, and I know council had suggested using the Santa Barbara template, which is why it was the most detailed thing we could find. It may be more detailed, it's a bigger city, bigger staff, there's a lot more there. But I think we could take those elements to try to frame the discussion here so we can then land on something and get back to council. But it, it sounds like we need to just like break down each element, some of which you did tonight. Because I know for me, I was wrestling with, do you want to treat hedges like fences and walls? I didn't think that was a great idea, and that's what it sounds like here.
Sensing the commission is, you don't.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I mean, just also from an enforcement standpoint, I'm imagining going into the community, telling people, you know, you give them 90 days to correct something, or that like you have to trim a hedge, and I'm picturing people on fixed incomes, or they just like their hedge.
People start talking about hedge Nazis, yes.
It's just, it, it, just it's sort of, if you want to go that way, know what you're getting into. But, um, I'm not sure how many, if it's one discussion more, I don't know. But I think we can come back with something that kind of frames, here's the issues piece by piece. Because I, I think there, there are some, again, is like the, some people may not care about, my front yard's my front yard, and if there's no safety issue, I don't care what you do. I think there's other people that are viewing it like, no, the front yard's a little different. We want to be, we don't want to just depart from what we have. But, you know, again, I, I think, again, there's that, you know, if something's 40 or 50 feet back, but it's in the front yard, is that different than if it's 10 feet back? And is that an issue? You know, so like that becomes the, the gray area of, is it a front yard, no matter how deep it is? Or is there a cutoff point where, no, that would be acceptable? And then how do you handle that? Because is this something that people want eight feet, 10 feet, 12 feet, whatever? Do they have a compelling reason, like there's a slope on their property, so it drops off? So, a 10-foot fence for them is like a six-foot fence for somebody else, and it's still set way back? That's another reason, I think, why you have a discretionary process.
And that's, that may be where the, the neighborhood, um, character comes into play with.
Right.
Requiem, what is being a threshold of some sort for certain kinds of structures.
And even, I know in the, in the Sergeant Town Planning exercise, going through it to take the pictures, you know, they were even talking about, they were pretty consistently looking at like a 42-inch, maybe four-feet height. They weren't talking about anything higher, but they did focus on some areas where stucco and stone is more appropriate than wood. And this was some between commercial and, you know, outlying areas. But again, that's leading you right into guidelines, that's not zoning ordinance material. But they were focusing on that as well, you know? And I, I don't know, I think this discussion is far more, based on what I had heard from city council members, far more focused on residential areas, almost entirely on the front yard. And again, I think safety is much more, you may debate like how much, how big should the triangle be, or whatever, but, but it's still, safety, safety, you can land on that pretty quickly with what you need to do. It's that discretionary, how much do you want to determine how somebody's front yard looks? Because again, neighborhoods do change. I can say, somebody who's grown up in the Bay Area, they have changed a lot with discussions about, um, homes getting bigger, and then you find out when people say, we need to cap the size of a house, it's not necessarily just the size of the house, it's stylistically what's happening to them. And it, it, then it, you find out it's a less simple discussion. And some cities just resolved it saying, we'll put a cap on the size, that way you can have this sort of ugly small house, but not an ugly big house. And we don't want to wade into playing, you know, negotiating what taste is here.
I don't think I want to find ugly anywhere in the code.
Right. But, and I don't think you have that type of issue, but there, there are, I think, going to be differences with some people feeling like, front yard is my property, and if I'm not creating a safety problem, privacy is my business. Versus some people who want to maintain, you know, and, and I think throughout even this city, you have some neighborhoods that are clearly different from others, based on the time they were built, where it's, it's again, hard to treat everything exactly the same, which is what the code currently does.
Yeah, I think we need more flexibility there.
Okay, so I will try to think about how we frame this to get it back to you, so we can get back to the council.
Great, great.
Very good.
Ray, did you have some other issues you wanted to raise, or?
Not other, not other issues.
Okay.
I am aligned with what Commissioner Nolan was saying about character of neighborhood. I, I appreciated your map, Luke, that showed the different colored neighborhoods. Because even though it's, you know, the city is small, there's lots of different flavors and lots of different lifestyles. And it, it's, you know, it's, it's very different on, um, within, you know, a few blocks changes. Um, I agree that whether it be a hedge or a wall, the safety issue has to have the precedence, because they're both obstructions.
Visual obstruction.
They're both visual obstructions. I, I do get a little, um, queasy when I hear about the, the setback, as I'm understanding it. Regulate, because, that's a regulation because we want to protect the person coming out of their driveway? I don't, I personally don't feel government has a right to tell me, to, to be responsible for my safety coming out of my driveway or into my driveway. But. Right, it's protecting the street one, because they need to be able to see coming out of the driveway. So, I get that, I get, I get that part. The character and aesthetic, I understand that probably has more to do with what's said in the general plan, and the character of the city, and the character of the neighborhood. But that is really important to me, anyway. For instance, I know someone who did a, a permaculture workshop at their house north of Grand, up in those kind of suburban homes. And, um, they weren't allowed to put fruit trees in the front yard. Or on the, uh, between the front yard, whatever that's called. I used to call it a parkway in LA.
Like a park strip, or.
Yeah, and they, they could.
Right away.
Yeah, they weren't allowed to put a fruit tree there, yet they wanted to put a sustainable household and, you know, swales and stuff, and they couldn't plant that. So, you know, in terms of the definition of a hedge, you know, I, I'd like someone to be able to put in, you know, row of pomegranate trees, if that's what they want to put in as their privacy wall, and they want to grow food. You, yes, Kathy, you probably know more about this.
You can actually, you can plant fruiting trees on your private property, but that strip is actually part of the public right of way, even though in the city of Ojai, the property owner is obligated, well, they should be taking care of it, maintaining or watering it. But I believe the reason a street, uh, fruit tree wouldn't be allowed there is a lot, probably because of the height limitation, and then also potentially, I don't know, it could be messy on the street and what have you.
Yes.
But you certainly could have it in the front yard, not on the public right of way.
So, I'd like to see in the definition of a hedges be trees and fruiting trees that might make a hedge, if it's at whatever distance from the right of way that we determine. And the character of the neighborhood is important. I know where, well, a personal example, when we sold my mother's house in, in Los Angeles, the family that bought it tore out all the trees, and now it's a fortress of a wall and wrought iron, you know, with a security gate, and, and took every piece of green out of there, where all the other homes still have it, have open, and there's hardly any walls on the whole street. And I don't, I, I understand what you say, Luke, that neighborhoods change. But I think, key, I think requiring some, a DRP, something triggers a DRP, depending on the neighborhood, that they need to come and have us review it, might be an important, important thing to do. A recent instance, and I, and I know we approved it, um, I think it happened before I was even part of the commission, was, um, where the well used to be, and, you know, on Eliso there. And, um, now there's a big cinder block wall that goes around the whole building. Yet it's really a, uh, even though it's mixed use, it's really a residential neighborhood. And to me, it's, to me, it's an obstruction and an eyesore in that neighborhood, not having that a green, a green belt there around the corner versus a cinder block wall. So, that was like a decision that was made that I'm not sure was the appropriate one for the neighborhood.
One, one other thing, I think, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, but when we're talking about the public safety aspects of either corner lot or interior lot visibility, I think we should, if, if we're going to set some limit on the height, which should be related to what a driver of a mid-sized car would be able to see, I think we need to be talking about distance above the road grade, not the grade where the plant is, or the fence is. Um, and that gets problematic for the homeowner if the grade is upward from the street, because you might wind up with a, an allowance of a one-foot-tall fence. But I think, I think that's something that needs to be discussed. And, and if we're going to be talking about public safety, we should be talking about sightlines, I think, from a driver of an average car. Not a jacked-up pickup truck, and, and not a Maserati, but an average car. So, maybe that's three feet, maybe that's four feet, whatever. But I think we need to be talking about, what does the driver see? Or what does an oncoming driver see? Not just an arbitrary number above grade wherever the fence or wall is.
But you also have to take into consideration how far back that is, and that affects the visibility.
Yes, yes, and, and, and this flex, well, I don't see that much flexibility in the Santa Barbara rules. They say a 10-foot setback, and then they give you a number. And I think a graduated, a graduated allowable height, as you move farther and farther from the property line, could, could work well for public safety, and it wouldn't be un-aesthetic any more than any other arbitrary number would be aesthetic or un-aesthetic. So. Have we exhausted the topic, Luke, you think?
I think I've gotten enough.
We've exhausted ourselves, at least.
Obviously, I think we need to come back, and again, maybe it's that point. This was a very broad general discussion, which is kind of where I figured it would start. I know this is years in the making, too. So, now at least I think it can be broken down into specific areas.
Okay.
To try to reach consensus on.
I would just like to request that, that we keep in mind the idea that we don't over-regulate and make things even more expensive than they are to.
Yeah, I, I think requiring people to come in for a design review permit is a sometimes necessary thing, but it's an always expensive thing.
Yes, wildly.
And so, we need to be very careful about, about the subset of cases in which we require a design review permit.
And we need to be careful with that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
But, but I wouldn't be opposed, I'm not opposed to design review when you're allowing something, when you're allowing additional flexibility, and you do want to consider neighborhood character, and where maybe you're, you're doing more walling off type of thing. So, um, I just want to put that in there. I, I, I personally don't have a real problem with that, although I do believe in making it a quick process and as inexpensive as possible.
Yep, I mean, I think as thorough as we can be in the guidelines.
Yeah.
Is good, and then there's, there will be the occasional exception where somebody would have to come in, and I agree, for a design review.
Right. Okay, let's move on. Item four, director decisions. Again, I want to compliment staff on, on categorizing these decisions so we can see, commissioner by commissioner, what's most important to you, and you can find that. You don't have to sort through the list and, and read every one if you don't want to. Are there any questions of staff on the director decisions?
Well, I really like the way you're organized, though.
Yes, yeah, that's very helpful to me.
I do too, I agree, and I just, so, um, just one comment on removing trees, the live oak trees. You know, I see removal, but I don't see anything about replacement. And, uh, you know, at some point, it becomes a real cumulative issue, and I hope that this is maybe something that we will be talking about as part of the general plan.
I, I noticed more have come in, and a lot of these instances, they've been in areas where there's many trees, which has been one of the issues, but I, I agree in terms of, I don't know if there's something, not to dream up another project, but an offset, say, if you can't mitigate on the site, can you mitigate elsewhere in the city where the trees are needed? That's not a bad idea, so you don't end up with some sort of a net loss.
Well, I'd like to go back to our status as a tree city, and I would really like to be looking at a citywide tree replace, replacement program of some sort.
Agreed.
Okay, good. All right, let's go on. Item five. We see the December 19th and January 2nd are both, it appears there are no cases. Well, already notices, we've passed the deadline for notices for December 19th.
It would be, yeah.
Two days ago.
At this point, but, and yeah, and right now, I don't think there's anything for the 2nd as well. I would have to look if there's something that can be put on the agenda. Well, one other question I had to is knowing that's January 2nd. Is that a date people want to meet, the day after New Year? That's kind of what I thought. Because I, as of now, too, there isn't anything pressing. We don't have a private application that. private application that needs to be moved through. And there are a number of things, I know I'm looking for a direction even from council more clearly or has to go to council first. One item we have looming, which was discussed before I was here, that should be coming soon is, um, uh, developing an adaptive reuse ordinance. We wouldn't have an ordinance here, which I know was slated to go to the Historic Preservation Commission, which is logical, but I also, my view is that that's something that would come before the Planning Commission as well.
Adaptive reuse?
Yeah, so essentially taking generally older buildings that would, it's typically commercial buildings getting reused as housing, older buildings, and trying to create incentives to keep the building, so it's not demolished or doesn't become dilapidated. It doesn't necessarily have to be older or converting to housing, but that's typically what it is. So it's linked very often with historic preservation. But I see that had been a, a council issue since before my time and to get that to the Historic Preservation Commission, it's something I'm working on is just to sort of look at what other cities are doing, address the topic. My sense is that's something I would want to get input from this commission as well, because it's not purely just a historic preservation issue. So that could be something again, probably sometime in, in, uh, January or February, depending on when it goes to the Historic Preservation Commission, which meets just once a month.
Okay.
And some of these other things here, I know there are not coming yet, are important. Like I said, we did get the RFQ out for the general plan. That will likely go into the spring before we're really having a consultant on board, but parking study report, I know I'm also looking for a little more clarification too, and I think that needs to get discussed at the city council, because I know parking's an issue, but again, what do we want to tackle with that report? Parking's such a big issue. So, um, yeah, I would, I'm not sure of exact dates when these will be coming before you, but I don't see anything for the next two meetings.
Um, okay, looking at the, the second page of this, we do have the design guidelines, tiny village parking study, landscape standards. Uh, at, at what point do we get involved? Uh, on, on the first four, what, we took care of discussing number one tonight. What is your anticipation that we discuss items two, three, and four, for example? Is that something we should be doing between now and the end of the year?
No. No, design guidelines I know had just gone to the previous city council meeting, which has, I believe, came before you when I was not here, in terms of the different design guidelines and the overlap.
Yes, we, we recommended.
Yeah.
We recommended a consolidated set of guidelines and clarifying their applicability such that no property was governed by three sets of guidelines like the Chevron station is.
Right, and many with two.
But, and many with two. But having said that, is there now something that we need to do or is this ball back in city council's court or what?
And it had gone to the city council as well. Like their direction was to clean up, take a quick approach, don't touch drafting the design guidelines for now. Let that wait till after the general plan and some other things go forward.
Okay.
But to focus on just getting properties that have multiple designations into a single designation.
Okay, and is that, does the council consider that to be your job as staff at this point, not, not a discussion or recommendation item for the commission?
No, ideally, I think it should come back to you after, and again, this was just at the recent meeting.
But this list at the top says items pending city council.
Right.
So all these items are pending, are in city councils.
Okay, but it shows tentative city council hearing.
And that date happened.
Those have all changed now.
That date's already happened.
Yeah, right, exactly.
So, correct.
So what happens next?
I think to finalize that, it should come back to the commission and then back to council for their final action. But they gave us clear direction to not rewrite, not do something terribly involved, no comprehensive update. Just clean it up where you don't have properties subject to more than one of the guidelines. That was the direction.
And, and that's, that's a staff recommendation back to the planning commission?
And then back to the city council.
And then back to city council, okay. Uh, item five, title ten, code cleanup. Now, we're talking about corrections that do not involve policy decisions here? Is that what we're talking about with cleanup?
Cleanup to me would be minor actions, and that's something that would not have to wait till a general plan update went. That would be something like, tonight, for instance, we're talking about the five-foot setback.
Because this says after general plan update.
Yeah, and I'm, I think there's a more comprehensive zoning change you want to do for consistency with the general plan. But in terms of cleanup to me.
But not till we know what the general plan is going to say.
Right, cleanup to me does not imply comprehensive. Cleanup's just that.
All right.
It's things that can be cleaned up fairly simply.
And those would have to be voted on by the planning commission and recommended to the city council?
Correct.
Okay. Just for reference, I have, I have been through all of title ten except chapter two, and I've started on chapter two. I can provide that to you if you like. It's everything from grammar to incorrect references within the code and stuff like that that I've found. I'm sure there's more that I missed, but at least what I found. And I know we had discussed having a, a contractor come in and do this, but I did not get a sense from the council that they were ready to go fund such an effort.
That was my understanding as well.
Yeah, okay. Well, I will offer you what I have done and as I do more, I will offer that to you as well. But it's all got to be written out, I guess in, I've just made notes right now. And we should, we should start with, with a word version of the code and do strikeouts and underlines and stuff like that, and then have it come back to the planning commission?
I think that would be a good idea, and yeah, that way you have, you can determine, are they just cleanups? Like you're saying, errors or things like that. Looked at something the other day on a, a sign reference where it just references the wrong section.
Right, yeah.
And that should be cleaned up. I mean, you, you know what it means, but you're going to go to the wrong section, so.
All right.
That's what I think that focus is, but there's no wholesale zoning update coming till after the general plan.
Okay, solar guidelines, we've done what we can and I thought city council approved, but.
I believe it has to go back to them though. It started with them, came to you, but the reason it has to get agendized before the council again is.
Fifty-eight percent to thirty degrees.
Right, but since that involves an ordinance, it has to be finalized by the council.
Right, yes, of course.
But you're right that they had, they had seen it before you as well.
Okay, and then items pending council direction, we'll wait on those, I guess. But I'll keep that list. Any other questions of staff? If not, let's move on to item six, liaison schedule.
And, um. Yes, and I am completely unprepared, didn't bring any notes, but I was there, um, and I can't tell you. I can't remember much, so I need my, I need my notes. So, go, go watch the video. Well, I was mostly concerned because my, my, I had a property that was up, that two fourteen West Eliso was my, a project that I was, uh, I was the applicant on. So a portion of that meeting was about, uh, approval of one of my projects. So I, I was very distracted, you might say, with, with getting that through and then afterwards, um, you know, celebrating with the applicants.
Well, and mean, meanwhile, both November thirteenth and twenty-seventh were the first two meetings that have to do with district voting.
Oh, right, yes.
City council members. If, if nothing else of note came up, plus marijuana, marijuana seems to be on every city council agenda right now. I don't want to say smoking hot.
But I will, right?
Yeah. And, oh, building appeals board?
Well, I have the, I have, I was at the council meeting on the twenty-seventh.
Right, okay.
But, so I have notes that I can't read. Uh, so they did, yeah, they, they, they discussed the cannabi, uh, cannabis manufacturing and microbusiness. In the end, uh, they're modifying the ordinance, uh, go, going back for a rewrite to have not five, but three. Uh, a maximum of three at this time. So, um.
Either manufacturing licenses or microbusiness licenses.
Yes, right.
But a total of three rather than a total of
Correct.
Five or six, whatever.
Right, so that's returning.
Next Tuesday.
I'm not sure. I, I, I didn't write down the date. I'm not sure when it's going back.
I'm not sure if it's going on the eleventh.
Well, they're not going to meet on Christmas Day.
Um, then, and then they discussed the district-wide election. They've hired a city demographer, I guess you all know that. That is going back on the eleventh. Um, I'll try to make this real brief here. And in, in regard to the discussion on the design guidelines, uh, there were, there were comments about, um, I hadn't noticed this, but I recognize it as an issue. Do we currently prohibit neon signs in the sign ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've got situations where we've got inside signs that are very bright neon that you are very highly visible to the outside, so.
And you're touching on a topic that's been pointed out quite a bit the last two weeks.
Okay.
And, and we have non-neon lottery signs that are every bit as bright.
Yes, well, that would be, yeah, so, uh, anyway, that's not part of what we're going to be talking about with the design guidelines, but you've already explained that, so, um, so we will be seeing that we're trying to get rid of the, uh, overlap and contradictions. There was something at the community gardens, but that's already happened with the rain catchment system and, and permaculture, so that would have been interesting. I, sorry, I missed that.
Out of the hill here.
And the, again, at the, the December eleventh meeting, they're going to be considering consolidation of, or addressing the VMU classification with issues involving several properties. Is that right? Did I get that wrong?
I'm not sure that was decided. VMU, the reclassification of it to a special district is something the council is going to take up, but I don't know that its date's certain.
But not December eleventh, okay.
No, not December eleventh. It may be in January, but not December eleventh.
Sorry, I got that wrong. Yeah, so December eleventh, there's, uh, we have a new council being seated. Uh, they may be discussing summer and north signal stop sign. Consultant Design Services, is that for the general plan? No, that wouldn't be for the general plan.
In fact, it was pointed out today that the city engineer, who is the public works director, has the power to unilaterally put a stop sign anywhere he wants in the city, which I thought was kind of unusual, but, um, if that's the case, then there, then the only issue with putting a stop sign on north signal at summer would be convincing Greg Grant to do it.
He needs one.
Complete streets, we, we agree.
Amen.
We've done our steps there.
So, yeah, and I, and I think the cannabis ordinance does come back on the eleventh. I do have some notes at the end, so.
Okay.
That's it.
Chester, the, uh, building appeals board meeting?
I missed that one.
No, they're, building appeals per council direction, they're not having them anymore. They're off the calendar, so we'll just remove that from your list.
They're not having meetings anymore? Only when there's an appeal?
That's correct.
Right, not, not the regular meetings they had been having, right.
Oh, because they have, they have been through title nine and made a recommendation to council.
Right, it was my understanding essentially they completed the council work program. If there's appeal, of course, they would meet for that.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, great.
All right, so we just put a big yex to that.
Right.
Okay.
I'm off the hook.
You're, you're off the hook on the ninth.
It's because I just put a star next to my name.
Chester is retroactively off the hook.
Yeah, right.
Okay, and, um, John Merk?
Yes, sir.
The MAC meeting?
I went to the MAC meeting. They, it was an interesting meeting. Um, they had presentations from the county staff about traffic conditions on El Roblar, uh, bike lanes, projects in Miners Oaks, and also about implementation of the Ojai Valley Area Plan Water Use Offset Policy. And it was an interesting meeting. There were a lot of people there, a lot of discussion about things, but it was mostly discussion. Um, they ended up asking county staff to come back at a future meeting with actual guidelines and, um, reports on the, the traffic speeds on different roads and things like that. Um, they did talk about a net zero water policy, um, within the retail water purveyor. It's an issue in Miners Oaks where there's the Miners Oaks Water Company. There's a new development going in there that is using water offsets from Cetis to offset their water use in Miners Oaks, so they, they wanted to make clear that, uh, I guess the, the people living in Miners Oaks want that to be part of their, within their, their group.
They want the offset within the, their district, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so the county's going to get back to them on that.
This was a, as I recall, it's a retirement home or assisted living facility.
Oh, that's a different one, that's.
Water offsets.
Right, they're using.
And low-flow toilets at the elementary school.
Right, they're using, they're doing that throughout the, uh, Ojai Unified School District. Um, but there's a new, new residential unit going in there that, uh, not residential, but retail.
Oh, yeah, right.
Down on, um.
Outside of El Roblar.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, they were using offsets from an elementary school that's outside the Miners Oaks Water District.
Was that where the massage school was?
Yeah, yeah. And it was all interesting, as always, to hear people say.
Very good, very good. Okay, um, there, there was one other thing I wanted to bring up, and I didn't ask Commissioner Merk about this beforehand. Um, and so if I embarrass you by bringing it up, my apologies in advance. I have been reliably informed that Commissioner Merk is planning to retire from the planning commission after twenty years of service. Um, I,
Twenty years?
Nobody could ever say you couldn't, you couldn't keep a job.
We've got to get, we've got to get him a picture on the wall.
Well.
You know, he's got, he's got to have a picture.
I, I certainly am going to be talking to city council members about some means of honoring your service, and I thank you for your service. You have been a mainstay. I've, I've, long before I joined the planning commission, I watched the planning commission. And it was, it was good to have someone with an architectural license and a calm manner to, to bring the discussion back on point every once in a while. And you have done that very well, and I appreciate the time that you've spent before I was here and while I have been here. It's been a great thing to have you on the commission. My concern at this point is that the municipal code says the commission shall have, one, one member of the commission shall be licensed to practice architecture. And now that Steve Foster's come and gone, and come January first, we'll say John Merk's come and gone, uh, it looks to me like we're going to operate with six members until we can find a licensed architect who would agree to sit there and be part of the commission. Or we change the code so that it's not a hard requirement that a licensed architect be a member of the commission. And I don't know which is the right answer. But that aside, thank you very much for, for doing what you've done. And if you'd like to say anything, please.
Thank you. Thank you for your kind words. I just want to thank everybody on the commission and all the previous commissions I've served on for all the work that everyone's put into it.
Many of those, yes.
It's been a real pleasure. And it's, I've, I've been amazed that it's taken as long as it has.
When is your last day, John?
Um, this is it.
This is it, today?
Because we're not going to meet on the.
Wow, yeah, we should have got together.
We'd have made a cake or something.
Exactly.
Bobby may make something.
I wanted to just, something quick too. John, well, first of all, I'm, I'm going to miss you. And Steve so eloquently stated all the. all the wonderful qualities, but there's another thing that you have brought to the table, well, the, being here for the 20 years, you've had this historic, historical context. So, we could always go back on a, a project that maybe had come back for, you know, three times over the last 10, 15, or 20 years. And John, I always felt like we had this anchor that we, you know, this resource that was sitting here with us that we could go back to.
Institutional memory, yes.
Exactly, thank you. Um, and anyway, we won't be, we won't be able to replace that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Or you.
We certainly can't. Okay, and with that, oh, yes, please.
Well, two things. Um, I wanted to thank Steve because today he chaired the Complete Streets, um, meeting for me and I didn't know if you were going to report on it, but I also wondered if I could take one minute to do, um, a little public outreach. And I believe Luke, you were sent this by Mike Anaba from the Tree Committee. Is that, or is that all right with you?
Of course.
I just mentioned, so anyway, um, it's just information to share with the public and basically what it is, is, um, this is a devastating threat to California trees. There, it's an invasive shot hole borer or borers, there's two different insects, and they're carrying this fusarium dieback disease. And, um, right now, um, they're both exotic species, they're, they're very small beetles, but they're, um, not only affecting, I'll just, I'm going to read this and make it a little easier. Southern California's urban trees, the native and riparian forests, and avocado groves. Thousands of severely affected trees have died or have been removed in both natural and landscaped areas. There's more to it, I don't, I won't read the whole thing, but I also wanted to say, and I know this is very late notice, but tomorrow, here in Ojai, December 6th, from 10:00 AM to 2:30 PM at St. Thomas Aquinas Church, they are having a workshop, um, put on by a UC Davis, excuse me, UC Riverside Cal Fire.
Oh, Riverside.
USDA Forest Service, the Britton Fund, University of California Cooperative Extension. And then, um, it's $30. I, I'm hoping that there's, you know, tickets still available, I'm, I'm assuming that there probably is, it's a large facility. But anyway, the registration includes class and field training, field guide, demonstration kit, and lunch. And if anyone needs continuing education hours for, um, California Department of Pesticide Regulation or International Society of Boriculture, you can get those credits. But they're also teaching, they have a class this Friday, it's 10 to 3:00 and that's in Gardena, down in Los Angeles. But, um, anyway, I just wanted to let people know and to be on the alert, you know, Chester, anyone who's out in the landscape or even in the wilds, if you see something suspicious, you can always call, um, the Cooperative Extension or Ventura County Chapter or Office here because it's, you know, it could be fairly devastating, you know, here's some pictures.
How would we know a shot hole borer if we saw one?
Right, well, I actually have some photos here, I'd be happy to hand this around. Of course, nobody can see this on TV, it's, or the televised version, but basically the borer, uh, you know, makes a small hole, oftentimes you can see the insect there and they'll be oozing. There's more to it and there's some information about firewood and what you should do and not do and taking care of your green waste. Um, basically, you don't want to move your firewood inside or outside from where you cut it or your local municipality or community.
Maybe you could send a soft copy of that to Sherry and we could get it up on the city website.
I could do that. Okay, and if anyone wants the information, I'll just send it to Sherry. Yeah, it's, it's a good warning and it's just a good thing for people to be on the alert for. And, you know, there's more information with photos and what have you, but I know it's really small and kind of hard to see here, so...
Right.
Yeah. I'm good.
Okay, Ray?
Thank you, Kathy.
Yes.
Um, yeah, I have a public announcement about an event that's happening at the Ojai Museum Sunday, December 9th at 4:30. It's a town talk on fire preparedness and, um, they're going to be covering, uh, uh, covering the field, so broad spectrum, evacuations, our current conditions to sustainable building and climate change, uh, bring your questions and concerns. It's called the Fire Next Time, a discussion on preparedness strategies for individuals and for the community. Uh, the panel includes James Freihoff, the Ojai Police Chief, John McNeil, the Ventura County Division Fire Chief, William Castagna, the Board President of the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council, Ed Bennett, the Director of Facilities at the Thatcher School, Charlie Whitman, wildfire fuel management technician at the National Park Service, Connor Jones of East End Eden, Ojai Permaculturalist. And they did invite me as a planning commissioner, but I'm not representing the Planning Commission, but I was asked to speak about, um, earthen buildings, straw bale, cob, fire safe home design, container building and some of the options that as of yet haven't been permitted to build, though the five buildings up at the Ojai Foundation that did survive the Thomas Fire were earthen structures, straw bale and cob, cob structures, and also the, um, steel home that John Davis built up in Upper Ojai. Um, so again, that's Sunday, December 9th, that's this Sunday from 4:30 to 6:00 at the Ojai Valley Museum.
That sounds like something that's going to have material all of us need to learn. Okay, and barring anything else, meeting's adjourned.